I would like to ask all of our commissioners, please stand, all of our guests in gallery, please stand for our prayer. I'd like to call forward, our chaplain is running late tonight, coming in from Manchester, so I'll call on our trustee, Mr. Ted Beatty, who will lead us in prayer, and then to the American flag and to the state flag of Tennessee. You recognize, Mr. Beatty?
Yeah. Almighty God, we're often in common with the presence of your greatness. Almighty God, Lord of lords, King of kings, we have to thank you, we have to thank you. Father, thank you for blessing us so much. This wonderful place in which we live, this wonderful community that we're able to enjoy our lives and learn from people. Father, I pray you to give us this blessing, this communion. Father, I pray you a blessing on this body as they liberate and breathe in the guidance of the canon and the place they are. Father, we all worship the worship of the canon. Father, have us all worship the great and the great service of him. Father, we pray for them to receive, we pray for them to offer and respond, we pray for them to fight, for our faith to be in their space of life. Father, with our standing in the name of our Lord and our Savior, we serve and bless our see, Father, we may in his space. Thank you so much for your charity, for your mighty flag.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three bright stars fill the blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone here tonight to our commission meeting, all of our guests and friends, all those viewing us from on our Rutherford County TV station. We welcome you. We have a full agenda tonight, members, so you're welcome to stay as long as you like. I don't think we'll have to order in pizza, but try to get out of here quicker than that. So, I'll call on Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, it's time to call the roll. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner David Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather. Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Key.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch. Commissioner Surrinio. Nineteen present, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum, and now we're able to conduct our business for tonight. At this time, I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tim Jeff Phillips for approval of the minutes. You recognize?
I've reviewed those minutes, I find that they're in order, with the exception of a couple of typos that have already been corrected, and I move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted as presented.
I have a motion for adoption. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have members, public comments. We had one person, Mr. Ron Alley, who had, is Mr. Alley present?
Yes.
Okay. Are you Ms. Alley? All right. Okay, if you would, please come forward. But you're speaking on behalf of Rutherford Arts Alliance. So as you approach the well, please state your name, who you're with, and you're recognized.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lee Ann Carmack, I'm with the Rutherford Arts Alliance. We have presented to this group before, Ron Alley presented here a month ago, and I'm just here to keep the arts in your mind and in the presence. We don't in the county have a cultural arts commission or any arts commission. So, we want to remind you, in the planning phases, we would like to be included in that discussion, the Rutherford Arts Alliance, if we choose to move forward with a cultural arts or arts program in the county. The Rutherford County Arts Alliance was established a few years ago. We advocate for all aspects of our cultural community. We promote Rutherford County as a cultural and heritage community destination. We communicate the social and economic impact of the arts, which in the 2018 study is $31 million in Rutherford County. That's what the arts impact is. We create opportunities for networking, collaboration, education, and economic success. And we also define the current gaps in arts programs in Rutherford County. We have a booth out on SIP shop and stroll tonight, if you'd like to come by afterwards and get more information. But we just want to remind you that we would like to be included or open up a conversation about getting a formalization of an arts program in the county. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for firing us up that.
I'm glad to see Senator Reeves here, too. He's done a lot for the Rutherford Arts Alliance, and we really appreciate his support.
Well, thank you for everything you do here in Rutherford County. We thank you. You can leave it on that table right there going out the door, people can pick that up on their way out. Next, members, we have item G on the agenda, is a resolution of sympathy for John Bubba Benton Woodfin. I'd like to call on Commissioner Harris first to come and read the resolution on behalf of the Rutherford County Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're recognized.
You know, they say that the best way to describe someone is by the two words that out of the buys, loved and blessed. And by the attendance of all these people that have came here today to celebrate him, it kind of proved that he was. David and Shannon are my neighbors, and David is someone that I just absolutely respect and look up to, and Shannon, and the reason that I'm telling you this is because somebody who is a good person like she is, is a testament to her father. And I'm honored and proud that I had the opportunity to read this resolution. I know, and I know that Woodfin was started in 1800s, and Mr. Woodfin was a fourth generation funeral director, and he was an avid outdoorsman, loving father, husband, and he is described as fine, care, and good businessman. Some of the things that we don't know as commissioners is that the outside railing on the courthouse was donated by Mr. Woodfin. So he was very charitable and generous in his, in his life. Whereas, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners expressed their deepest sympathy to the Woodfin family and all who share in the loss of the esteemed citizen John Bubba Benton Woodfin. And whereas, John Bubba Woodfin was the son of the late John T. Junior and Virginia Black Woodfin. He was also preceded in death by Sister Virginia, Love Woodfin Beasley, and a brother-in-law, Harold Beasley. He is survived by, he's survived by his cherished wife of 61 years, Catherine K. Shannon Woodfin, beloved daughters and their husbands Shannon and David Parsons, Catherine Kitt and Chuck Ramsey, Melissa and Ron Combs, Ashley and John Becker, sister and her husband Francis Sissy and Don Follis, grandchildren and their spouses Katie and Philip, Mylum, Charlie and Amanda Ramsey, Hannah, Margaret Allen, Gracie Combs, Meg Combs, Anne Frances Becker, Catherine Becker, and Jack Becker, great-grandchildren Ramsey Kate, Oliver, Addison, Ellie, and Lucy, and a host of other dear family members, friends, and loved ones. Whereas, Bubba was a highly regarded gentleman and native of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. He was a 1954 graduate of Murfreesboro Central High School, who attended Middle Tennessee State University and earned his degree from John A. Gutten College in Nashville, Tennessee in 1957. He was a fourth-generation funeral director who faced, first started in funeral business at the age of 12, riding in an ambulance with his father. He was an honorable veteran of the United States Army and an avid outdoorsman who enjoyed hunting and fishing around the world, but especially enjoyed hunting in South Dakota. He was a past president and active with the Rutherford County Sportsman Club and Noon Rotary Club, and was named a Paul Harris Fellow with his wife in 2009 Hardball Honorees and 2014 Plantress of the Year by St. Thomas Rutherford Society. Bubba was the president of Tennessee Funeral Directors Association from 1974 to 1975, who also served as a former officer with the National Selected Morticians. He was a devoted family man and member of the Water Hill Country Club and the Hooper Supply Boys, and most importantly, a faithful lifelong member and elder of Central Christian Church. Whereas, John Bubba Woodfin is remembered on this day for the many and generous contributions he made to his family, friends, and all of Rutherford County. He will be deeply missed by all those whose lives he had touched by his remarkable presence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, in its regular session on the 17th day of June 2021, do hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of John Bubba Benton Woodfin, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy will be forwarded to the family of John Bubba Benton Woodfin by the clerk of the legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion, have a second from Commissioner Phillips, and let the record show that all commissioners on the motion. Members are on the board, voting for the resolution, without questions, without objection. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote.
Everybody's not working?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Can I have Mr. Woodfin?
Yeah.
Can I have the Parsons family, I mean, the Woodfin family come up, please?
All right.
Yeah, come on up here, Chuck, just line up. There we go. Ms. Kay.
Shannon, I'm gonna give you, this is our resolution. Deep in sympathies, and thank you so much. Just stay up here.
Just stay right where you are. I've got a little sidebar to tell you about the fence section, the original fence section of the courthouse. A good friend of the Woodfins who always hung out at the house was a friend of mine, Ricky Davis. And Ricky knew that we were remodeling the courthouse, and he told Bubba one day, he said, "Mayor Katrin's and the county commission's remodeling the courthouse." He said, "What are you gonna do with that old piece of fence over there?" And he said, "Well, it belongs to the courthouse." He said, "Tell Katrin, come over here and get it." Steve Sallin took the truck over there. "Ms. Kay, you had your beautiful irises around the fence, and we pulled it up and stuck it back in the truck, and here it is." And we put a nice plaque out there to always remember. I don't know how Bubba found it, got it, but it's out here in his memory. So, we're glad that that's part of our history here, and we want that to be remembered. Also tonight, members, we have some members of our state delegation representing Rutherford County. We have Senator Reeves, Senator White, Representative Rudd, and Representative Baum here with us tonight. Anybody else in the audience? Who was that? Anybody else Sparks? Anybody else Brian Terry? Okay. Senator Reeves, if you would, bring the delegation up, stand with you. They have also a resolution that was passed before they signed he died, and so we'll call on Senator Reeves with the rest of the delegation in support.
Mayor Katrin?
You sure can.
The staff in Woodfin Chapel is also here, and I think it would be appropriate if they could come and join us.
Absolutely, Mr. Parsons. Would the staff please come up here and join the Woodfins?
(APPLAUSE). Bill Allen is one of the staff members, and you know the history behind Mr. Allen. He's been with them.
Yeah. Mr. Bill Allen, he's one of our local WWII heroes that we'd like to honor, and original staff member, not four generations back, but you know, he's.
Almost.
Almost, right? Senator, you're recognized.
Right. Good evening. Well, I think we're gonna have more people up here than we're gonna have out in the audience.[964.62][964.62](LAUGHTER). So very honored to be a state senator in this area and to work with this fine delegation of Representative Baum and Rudd and White, and so very honored to honor this wonderful family. When I left my office just a little while ago, the last thing I saw when I walked out was my pheasant. And I know he loved going to South Dakota, and my dad loved going up there as well. He may have a long way, but thought of him as soon as I left tonight. But you can't think of Murfreesboro, and you can't think of Rutherford County without thinking of the Woodfins. You just can't. You've just done so much, the family's done so much, and obviously, Bubba's personality and his charm and his cornbread.
That's right.
That's right.
Hey, Mom.
Helped a little bit along the way. Blessed a lot of people along the way, and so the resolution we have from the state is very similar to the one that we have from the county. So as opposed to reading all that, I want to make a couple opening comments on behalf of the Senate. You want to add something on behalf of the Senate before we let the House say something?
Well, this is just a personal note to Bubba and your entire family. You know, you meet a lot of people in their worst times with the loss of a family member and going through such a tragic time. And I remember with the loss of my grandmother, Bubba was so kind, he was so welcoming, he was so patient, and that was the man he was. With families that's going through such a great loss during that time of tragedy, he was a man of honor. You trusted what he said. He was so compassionate to all of the family members that were in that room, and he just let the light of the Lord shine through him. And very, very few people you can ever say was a true statesman and an honorable man, and Bubba Woodfin was definitely that.
So on behalf of the State House, Representative Baum, would you like to say something?
Thank you. On behalf of Representative Tim Rudd and Representatives Mike Sparks and Brian Terry, I'm pleased that the Tennessee State House was part of this resolution to honor the memory of Mr. Woodfin. Mr. Woodfin and his whole family have been very generous and important to this community. It seems like whenever I've been at a charity event here in Murfreesboro, Mr. Woodfin or his family have been there. Murfreesboro's got a lot of charities and a lot of charity events, and my proof of that is the Murfreesboro VIP is as thick as the Nashville VIP. And I saw Mr. Woodfin at, most recently, at the Oakland's fundraiser, where he was holding an audience, telling about the history of the county and the history of Oakland's. I was sort of on the peripheral edge of the circle, and I really should have been standing on my tiptoes so that I could see and hear. He had a lot of valuable information for the community and was also generously donating to Oakland's. So again, on behalf of the Tennessee State House, I'm pleased that we've been part of this resolution to honor his memory. So, your family's loved, and it's just an honor to stand up here and do this tonight. And I know he's missed, but his legacy is so evident here tonight. So I think I'll read the very last sentence of this resolution, which says this. Whereas Bubba Woodfin was a compassionate man who dedicated his life to comforting people when they had lost a loved one, and his legacy will live through one of his many acts of kindness. Now therefore, be it resolved by the state of Tennessee, by the state senate, by the state house, that we honor the memory of John Benton Woodfin, known as Bubba, of Murfreesboro, reflecting fondly upon his life of purpose and commitment to others, and extending our condolences and deepest sympathy to the family and many friends. This is signed by the governor and both the speakers and the entire Rutherford County delegation. So, God bless you. Let's thank them again.[1198.73][1198.73](APPLAUSE).
Somebody get a picture, somebody get a picture, Rod. Somebody got a camera? Rod, you got a camera? Somebody got, make a picture for me. Get that real quick. Okay, Shannon, everybody want to say anything?
Any family member want to say something? You're welcome to. Do you want to say something? You don't have to. Thank you. Oh, you want to say something? Sure.
I want to thank everyone here tonight. It means more than you'll ever know. It's been a tough year, but we've gotten through it because of friends like you, and God has been there for us. Thank you for your kindness, your prayers, and for this unbelievable gift to our family. Thank you. (APPLAUSE). I'd also like to just recognize Woodfin Chapel staff.[1302.83][1302.83](APPLAUSE). And Mr. Bill.
He is the staff.
Mr. Bill, would you like to say anything? Would you like to say a word about Bubba? You've known him the longest.
You've put a lot of tricks, but now this is me.
You've known Dad the longest, and my granddaddy.
My life has been blessed with many, many privileges, but being here tonight continues that string of privileges. It's an honor to be here, to be associated with this family, Bubba and myself. We could spend all night talking about our tales together. I lost a great friend.
A lot were not true. But go ahead. Tales.
She's not already, she called me a liar, she doesn't know it.[1364.62][1364.62](LAUGHTER). But thanks so much for each one of you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next, members, we have a resolution of sympathy of Mr. Ben Cates. I'd like to call on Commissioner P. and Commissioner Buchanan presenting a resolution to Mr. Ben Cates. Chairman, Commissioner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Ben Cates was a neighbor and a friend, and I want to thank Veronica. He actually resided in her district, but as I say, he was a neighbor and a friend, and actually was one of my high school teachers. He was a math teacher, and he was a strict teacher, and he was good, and he was fair. As a matter of fact, at the time, I didn't realize how blessed we were at Kitterell with the educators that we had. I graduated in '72, which is the last year, if some of you may recall, that the old high schools were in place. After that time, the teachers at our school went on to other schools, and many of them became heads of department at Oakland, Riverdale. Many of them became principals. Many of them went on to be outstanding in their particular fields, just to name a couple of them. His brother Steve, of course. Laura Ann Mackey, she was a English teacher for a long time over at Oakland. Sharon Summers later became a principal up in the Smyrna area there. And can't forget my trick teacher, Don Odom. And these guys are not that much older than me, they had just got out of college and started teaching about the time I hit high school there. But we were truly blessed with people like Ben Cates and his family in the teaching profession at Kitterell, and later at our other high schools, both Oakland and Riverdale. Ben sacrificed a lot for his community and his family, and if you've never coached, you don't realize how much time away from your own family that you have to commit. And he did an outstanding job. You know, he took Kitterell's girls' basketball to the state multiple times, same thing with Oakland later, and you know, started them on the correct path on how to win at basketball. He was known in our community, both for his teaching and his coaching. I remember Monty Hale, I don't know if any of y'all remember Monty, but he made the statement one night, he said, "If you want to steal chickens, go to Kitterell on basketball night, because everybody's at the gym." But anyway, the thing about Ben is he was both respected and loved by our community, and not just our community, but the whole of Rutherford County. He later became our first recreational director, and you really don't know what that means unless you've got children that went through those programs. You know, there's kids that weren't getting meals at times. They helped feed the kids in the summer program. They developed softball fields, they helped support groups get started, helped put up lights, you name it. Got the schools to allow them to use the gymnasiums in the summer, and it was really hard to do that at times. As a matter of fact, I think Kitterell was one of the last gyms we finally got permission to use Recreation Department for the summer use, and I remember how pleased he was. But the last thing I want to say about Ben is I truly in my heart believe that he's done more for the children of Rutherford County than anybody that I know of. I know there are a lot of outstanding men and women that have done a lot for this community, but Ben certainly needs to be recognized for that. Thank you.
Whereas, it was with great sadness that Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Mr. Ben Cates. And whereas, Mr. Cates is survived by his wife of 50 years, Juana L. Cates, his children, David and Ashley L. Cates, and Shannon C. and Andy Jakes, his grandchildren, Benjamin and Natalie R. Cates, and Brian and Joseph Jakes, his brothers, Steve Cates, his sister-in-laws, brother-in-law, and their families, Donna Loggins, Nancy L. Williams, and Walter and Laura Loggins. Mr. Cates was a graduate of Kitterell High School, Kitterell School, sorry, and received graduate and undergraduate degrees from MTSU. He taught for 39 years at Kitterell School and Oakland High School, and coached girls' basketball at both schools for a total of 20 years. He was Rutherford County's first Recreation Director, a position which he held for 46 years. He is also a member of the Oakland High School Basketball Hall of Fame. Whereas, Mr. Cates attended First Baptist Church on East Main since 1945. He served as a deacon and many other leadership positions within the church. And whereas, we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, in its regular session on this 17th day of June 2021, does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Ben Cates, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Ben Cates by the clerk of the legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Commissioner P. and others. Any objection? Saying none? Are we on the board? We're, okay. We're on the board, members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, they may do so now.
Record a vote.
One a yes.
Motion passes. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Members, we've had a request from Commissioner Rather. He has been delayed, and this next item on your agenda is a resolution for Halloween Speed Limit Resolution, and he would like to present that. So without objection, I'll roll that to the heel of this agenda until he can get here. So that takes us next to Item J, Elections and Confirmation. Commissioner Reed, you recognize it well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one, Elections of Notaries. Commissioners, there's a listing of notaries. May be found in your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County Notaries. Have a motion, and we have a second. All right, Commissioner Serrano, question? No, you're just seconding. Okay. Okay, we're on the board, members. Please cast your vote. Went back down? All right. It's back up. Here it goes. It's working. Everybody, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote.
Nineteen yes.
Commissioner? Item two, Steering would like to accept the resolution stating the revocable resignation of Judge Ben Hall McFarland Jr. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept. Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Kush and Commissioner Cook. You counted? All right, we have a motion and a second. We're on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty voted yes.
Motion passes. Item three, Steering would like to announce a vacancy for a general sessions judge, Part One. Item four, Steering wishes to confirm three vacancies for the CCRC Board. Greg Louse, Doug Bowery, and Annie Ruth Usleton, terms to expire July 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move. Have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Cook also on the second. If you wouldn't, members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record a vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes.
Motion passes. Commissioner? Item five, Mr. Chairman, Steering presents three candidates to be elected by the full commission to fill two expiring positions for the Industrial Development Board and the Health and Education and Facilities Board, with those terms to expire August 2027. Those three candidates are Edwin Davenport, Gary Wisniewski, and Tara McDougall. Mr. Chairman, I yield for you to conduct that election. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some members, we have, we have two slots for the IDB Board, so their terms will expire in August as stated, 2027. So you have three names before you, and we will be electing two. Okay?
Chairman?
Commissioner Blair?
I watched the Steering Committee vote, and it was unanimous for Mr. Davenport from the Steering Committee.
Okay. You heard that? Mr. Blair stated that at the Steering Committee, that Mr. Davenport, it was unanimous for him to be elected by all seven members and send it to the full commission.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The motion was that we vote for two people to be, to go, to be on IDB Board. We had Mr. Davenport, Ms. Wisniewski, and Tara McDougall, and we had a tie. So there was a tie between Tara and Mr. Wisniewski, so we had to come back here and do all three of them and vote for two. And that's why Commissioner Blair was like that.
What's the will of the commission? Steering, you've seen what, we have three to vote on. You can ask them to come up and give a five-minute speech. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we nominate all three candidates, and each commissioner votes for two.
Second, have a motion and a second, that all three be nominated, and you vote for two. Madam Clerk, are you prepared?
Yes, I would like to know the three names that they're voting on.
Okay, we have Mr. Edwin Davenport, Mrs. Tara McDougall, and Mr. Gary Wisniewski. Hope I pronounced that right. Wisniewski. Commissioner Allen?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say Edwin Davenport is an institution among people in Smyrna, and so I would highly recommend that you reaffirm him. The other statement I want to make is, I spoke with Ms. McDougall, and she made a statement to me that rang true with me, and I think it may ring true with some of you as well. She is just now completing her first term on IDB. When you join a board like that, just like when I joined the county commission, that first term, you're just learning. I mean, there's different language, there's different, you know, examples, experiences that you're going to encounter, and so that's really kind of when you learn. So at the end of my first term, I felt like I was just starting to get good at it, and so that was the reason that I ran for a second term. And that's kind of the opportunity that we have here with her now is to take advantage of that experience that she's had for that first term. Otherwise, I feel like that was kind of a wasted term, because again, like I said, she's just now getting good at it. The other thing that nobody wants to say, but I'll say it, and I can, because I'm a female, is that she's the only female on that board. And I think it's an important perspective, and I don't think it needs to be excluded. So I'd encourage you to vote for her as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments before we vote? Commissioner Serrano? Okay. Commissioner P.?
Thing I'd like to say is we've got three outstanding candidates across the board. We're not going to lose however this falls out. We've got three outstanding candidates, and whoever does not get to nod, I want you to reapply. You know, it's a shame that it gets down to something like this, but at any rate, I don't think the county's going to lose.
Sure. All right. So Ms. Crowell, her alarm's gone off at the office at 3:19 Maple, so we're going to substitute with our assistant. She'll be calling the roll. Mrs. Wells, Mrs. Annie Wells will be filling in until she returns to get the alarm turned off. And here comes Commissioner Rather. So please come on in and have a seat, because we're getting ready to vote. So Ms. Wells, if you would, we'll start at the top of the list with, oh...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner?
Can we have the nominees, if they would like to speak?
Sure.
If they could have that opportunity?
Without objection. Seeing none. Okay, we'll go with, who's first? Mr. Davenport. Mr. Davenport here? Okay, we'll go to Ms. McDougall. Ms. McDougall? Just repeat from last week, Steering. Introduce yourself to the commission.
Commissioners and Mayor, I just want to, before I make my comments, which are going to be brief, I do want to recognize that you just saw this evening something that makes Rutherford County the best place anywhere to live. And that was the two resolutions to recognize both the Cates family and the Woodfinch family. So I applaud all of you for doing that. I think that was well deserved, and I think we all appreciate it. So, over the last week, I think I've pretty much spoken with every single one of you but for a few. And so my comments tonight are going to be brief. I appreciate all of you that took the time to speak with me. I have had the privilege to serve for one term on the Industrial Development Board. And I do agree, Commissioner Allen, that I do bring a valuable perspective to the IDB. And I would be very honored if you were to renew and approve my nomination for another term on the Industrial Development Board. As I mentioned right at the beginning, we live in an amazing county, and I feel very, very confident that the future is bright and our best years are before us. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tara. Next we have, is Mr. Gary Wasniewski. Wasniewski? I just call him Gary, okay? Okay. Mr. Wisniewski, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mayor Ketchwin, Commissioners and guests, my name is Gary Wisniewski. I'm here tonight to thank you for the honor and privilege to speak with you this evening regarding my desire to serve on the Industrial Development Board. I currently reside at 4209 Emerald Drive here in Rutherford County with my wife Donna of 37 years. We moved our family to Murfreesboro 32 years ago and have enjoyed the privilege of raising our three children in this exciting and ever-changing community. We are devout members of St. Luke's Catholic Church in Smyrna. We have been involved in leadership positions on the Boys and Girls Club, Habitat for Humanity, St. Rose of Lima Catholic Church, St. Luke's Catholic Church, Leadership Rutherford, and the National Association of Home Builders. After moving to Murfreesboro, we opened Landmark Homes of Tennessee in 1990 and have built over 3,000 homes here in middle Tennessee, as well as developed over 100 subdivisions and put on the ground over 3,000 residential building lots. Being in the home building and development business allows me the ability to have my finger on the pulse of not only Rutherford County, but six other surrounding counties where we build and who are also growing at an alarming pace. This situation is a blessing, but it must be managed correctly to promote smart growth for today, tomorrow, as well as 30 years into the future for our children. The businesses that we attract to our county must possess the highest levels of honesty, of integrity, and community spirit that is available in the business world today. It is my desire to humbly ask for your vote tonight for this honored position. With that, Rutherford County has given me and my family, it would be an honor to be awarded another opportunity to give back to this great community that has been so gracious to myself and my family. In closing, I'll leave you with a quote that I live by from Robert Baden Powell, the founder and first chief scout of the Worldwide Scout Movement. And he said, "Try to leave this world a little better than you found it." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, are we prepared to vote?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure and share with the commission. I don't want anyone to think that Mr. Davenport took tonight's vote for granted. He did not. He had a family conflict and was not able to join us.
Thank you so much for that comment. Ready to vote? Members, it'll be voice vote. When your names call?
Commissioner Gammon.
Davenport, McDougall.
Commissioner Pierceley.
Davenport, McDougall.
Commissioner Rather?
First of all, here. Secondly, Davenport, McDougall.
Commissioner P.
McDougall and Wasniewski.
Commissioner Cook?
Davenport and McDougall. McDougall.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Davenport and McDougall.
Mayor Kush? Commissioner Reed?
Davenport, Wisniewski.
Commissioner Gurley?
Davenport and McDougall.
Commissioner Blair?
Davenport, McDougall.
Mayor Allen?
Davenport and McDougall.
Commissioner Stevens?
Davenport, McDougall.
Commissioner Johnson?
Davenport and Mr. Wisniewski.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon?
Davenport and McDougall.
Commissioner Harris?
Wisniewski and McDougall.
Commissioner Dodd?
Wisniewski and McDougall.
Commissioner Phillips?
Davenport, McDougall.
Mr. McAdoo?
Davenport and McDougall.
Mr. Key?
McDougall, Wisniewski.
Mr. Goats?
Mr. Davenport and Mrs. McDougall.
Commissioner Serrano? Okay, Mr. Davenport and Ms. McDougall received the most votes.
Congratulations. We'll get word to Mr. Davenport and Ms. McDougall. Congratulations. And Gary? Keep trying. There's a place for you to serve somewhere. Thank you for offering your time. There's a, we always have openings, different boards and coming forward, so we'll reach back out to you, because I know that there's always opportunity to serve the county, and thank you for wanting to serve. And congratulations, Tara, you're here. And I'm going into your second term, so... Thank you, members. Back to Commissioner P., you're recognized. I, Reed, I'm sorry. Whatever. I'll answer anything. Item six, Mr. Chairman, Steering wishes to confirm chip pinion to the Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire August 2025. I so move. Have a motion and a second. A second by Commissioner Buchanan. Members, I was, I think we can go back to me asking for your vote verbally. I was trying out this new system that they got up here. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Looks like it's working. Includes the business of elections and confirmation. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Let's go back, members. We had bumped it to the end of the calendar, but now that we have, before we get into the rest of the meat of the business, we'll go back to the resolution as requested by Commissioner Rather. Commissioner Rather had asked, he was running a little bit late, and if we would bring up the Halloween Speed Limit Resolution he would like to present. If you'd like, please come forward to the rail. Commissioner Rather? Okay, those flowers for you. Here. They're 200s. I hope you can see. Just put it on the end of your nose and read. That's all right. You can only read one line at a time. Can you see? All right. All right.
You what? That's so sad, everybody's got reading glasses but me.
Well, this is Halloween, not Christmas, all right?
Yes. I've got a comment to make and then I'm going to read this resolution. No one is immune from tragedies in life. And we've all experienced them to varying degrees. As a parent of three kids, there is no, there's not a worse tragedy I can imagine than the passing of one of my kids. And I think everybody could agree with that. It's a tragedy that does not heal. You don't overcome. And only with God's grace, His mercy, His power, can you move forward. And I've, I personally know a couple of parents who have lost not one kid, but several, couple. You don't overcome that. You don't get beyond it. But with God's grace, mercy, and power, you can move forward. Halloween night of 2020, Janesa Perkins and Charles Chuck Isbell, are they here? Mayor, can I ask them to come forward?
Yes, without objection.
Without objection.
Please come forward.
Can y'all come forward? Halloween night of 2020, Janesa Perkins and Chuck Isbell experienced every parent's worst nightmare. Their son Nathaniel Nate Elijah Isbell lost his life on this earth in a very tragic accident on Pousch Chapel Road. Commissioner Cook, could, do you want to come up here or you want to stay? You're good? Okay. He lost his life on Pousch Chapel Road on a Halloween night, visiting friends, trick-or-treating, doing what is he 14? 13? 13? 13-year-old does. He lost his life. Statistics show when you look at pedestrian versus vehicle, 5% of pedestrians would die when struck by a vehicle traveling 20 to 25 miles an hour. 40% for vehicles traveling 30 to 30 miles an hour. 80% would die for vehicles traveling 40 and nearly 100% for speeds over 50 miles an hour. With all that being said, I'm going to present this resolution. This is a awareness issue. It's an acknowledgement. We don't make laws here. I understand that. But this resolution is encouraging folks to, especially on Halloween, slow down. Slow your roll. I travel from Rutherford County to Coffey County. Sheriff and I have talked about this. I travel it every week. And I have people, I'm doing 75 and I have people blowing by me all the time. We hear about the road rage and, you know, we've, we've had, I think, Rutherford County number one in the state fatalities on the interstate. Slow down. And that's what I'm asking this commission to say is, we encourage folks to slow down, take your time, be patient, and just use some sense. So with that being said, I'm going to present this resolution. And it says, whereas many people in Rutherford County celebrate Halloween with their families and friends by walking residential neighborhoods, neighborhood streets, and going door-to-door for candy and other treats, we, we all know that. Whereas it is important that automobile drivers remain vigilant while driving at all times, but also be extra cautious when driving on Halloween due to the increase in pedestrian traffic, which includes children and adults of all ages. And whereas Rutherford County extends its sincere condolences to the family of Nathaniel Elijah Isbell, AKA Nate, who was struck and killed by an automobile on Halloween. And whereas Rutherford County encourages all of its citizens, all of its citizens, to exercise safety at all times while driving on county roadways, but in particular to exercising more caution while driving on Halloween due to the increase in pedestrian traffic. And whereas Rutherford County encourages, supports, and advocates for automobile drivers to not exceed 25 miles per hour on any roadway in residential neighborhoods on Halloween. Now therefore, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that this body does hereby show its support, hereby encourages and advocates automobile drivers not to exceed 25 miles per hour on any roadway in residential neighborhood on Halloween. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. And Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve this resolution.
Have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second? Have a second from Commissioner Piercey. Other comments or discussion?
Can I have two minutes?
You sure can, without objection.
Hi, my name is Janesa Perkins. I was Nate Isbell's mother, who's the 13-year-old red-haired curly firecracker, curly-haired firecracker. On October at 6:20 PM, Nate was riding a skateboard within two feet of the right-hand side of the road where a pedestrian should be. And he was hit and killed by a speeding inattentive driver. He had a brain hemorrhage. All of his ribs were broken. His aorta was completely severed. His back was broken and his spinal cord was severed. His hip was broken off of his, I'll call him. I believe we need this resolution to protect other children. They should be able to go out on Halloween night dressed as their favorite superheroes or princesses. And their parents might have a little bit more safety in their heart, but they'll be I really hate that we've had to go through this. It's the most horrible thing that we've ever had. I dropped him off at school on Friday and the next time I saw him was in a casket. No parent should ever have to pick out their child's tombstone. If this is adopted, we may never know the good that it does because those children get to live, their parents don't have to plan a funeral. And I'm just thankful for Michael for taking this seriously and helping me come to this point with the resolution. So, thank you very much for your time and attention.
Hello, I'm Chuck Isbell. Nate was my son. I would also like to thank Commissioner Rather and Janesa Perkins and many others helping getting us here tonight. Every morning I wake up, I think it's November 1st, I have to remind myself of the date. You see, I was supposed to pick Nate up at 10 AM from his friend's house so we could spend the day together. Nate was an amazing person. There's not a week that goes by that we don't hear of something he did for somebody. Nate would stop bullying when he saw it. He would try to make you laugh when you were down, being, being a true friend to all. We think one of the biggest impacts he made was on his niece. She was talking to me this last weekend about Nate. She was telling me some of the stuff they would do and how much she missed him, which is very upsetting to hear a four-year-old say. He loved music, playing games, superhero stuff, and animals. One year we fostered kittens and he got to keep one with his mom. And if he ever saw a lost dog, he would look for his owner or bring it home. But his love for music's where he came alive. And Nate was trying to start a band and he would talk to everybody about it. He was always trying to recruit people from school for it. He dressed as if he was in the 90s. People would see him wearing old rock shirts and they would ask him questions about the band to test his knowledge, which he always knew. Like many people his age, he wanted to make it big, but that was taken from him. Halloween was always a big holiday for me and my kids. I would get their costumes or we would make them together, just whatever they needed or wanted. Nate loved dressing up for Comic Cons. He liked dressing up for home and Halloween. This new law would, would help protect people. No parent should have to do the things that we've had to do over the last several months. As Janesa said, you know, no parent should have to pick out their child's tombstone or casket or any of that stuff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
A lot of us are parents. I do want to thank David Gammon and, well, Commissioner Gammon, Dee Gammon, and Commissioner Cook. There was a little controversy and confusion about whose district it was. And at the end of the day, I thought, we're all their commissioners regardless of districts. And on behalf of all of us, especially Commissioner Cook, I think she ran home the day I called her and put this together. On behalf of us, this has to go on his spot here. But he's not here. He's somewhere else. And praise God for that.
Members, we have a motion and a second. They'll all be on the board. Members, please cast your vote. It's recorded. Record the vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Have 21 yes. Resolution passes. Thank you, commissioners, everybody involved. It's, uh, very some suffering time and nobody wants to lose a child or a parent, either one, but parents don't think that their child will leave before they do. Makes it tough. Next, members, that takes us to item number K, resolution to approve the consent agenda. Chairman Pro Tim Phillips, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Ketchum. I've removed, I've reviewed the items on our consent agenda and agree that they're all appropriate for the consent agenda. And without objection and without a request to remove an item, I move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Have a motion for adoption and a second. Commissioner P.?
There's one particular item. There was a agenda that came out, the original agenda, and it had the RFQ Medical Director item listed on that, and that has been withdrawn or removed.
Right. That's correct. All right, members, you heard that. Will be on the board for the consent agenda.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Item L on the agenda is unfinished business. We have none at this point in time. Public hearings, we have no public hearings tonight. Next on the agenda is item N, reports from our standing committees. Our first report tonight's Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Chairman P., you're recognized.
Well, as you've noticed, we have an extensive agenda to commemorate that. I've got a new notebook. The other one wasn't small enough. I was too small to hold them all, but Mark graciously fixed this for me. I'll try to make these as brief as possible. Most of them we've seen, of course, budget and finance has seen them. Many of the other committees have discussed them. The first item is item N1A. And these are basically corrections at the end of the year that we normally do. And the first one has to do with different costs for employees leaving or coming. Somebody hired that was at a lower or higher rank and filled in the position. Also, the, the second part of this is for unemployment. And I'm not going to go through and read these 50 items, but be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows for salaries in various departments. And this is for salaries and related benefits. And the total of that is a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $51,385. You can see the items above on your iPad. Also, unemployment for the various departments, and this is corrections. We have increased expenditures caused by these corrections and ends up with a decrease in our unassigned fund balance of $33,840. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any questions? Madam Clerk is returned. I hope everything's in order. Pause, Lauren. Madam Clerk, if you would, we're on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is item N1B, and it's a continuation of what we just looked like, however, this is for solid waste. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste fund be amended as follows for the convenience centers, increased expenses for unemployment, $1,450, and a decrease in assigned fund balance of $1,450. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a second. Commissioner Piercey. Any questions? Our discussion. Seeing none, you'll be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record, record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, N1C, is a continuation of what we've been looking like and some judgments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency Medical Service Division, increased expenditures for judge- Emergency Medical Service Division, increased expenditures for judgments, $150,000, and a decrease in assigned fund balance of $150,000. And that is for future liability claims. We also have an increase in unemployment costs of $1,270, and we'll also decrease our assigned fund balance for $1,270. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. It was on the second. Commissioner Pato, Serino, and Commissioner Kush. Members, you're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Is recorded a vote?
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes. Item D.
Item N1D. Whereas Assured Partners has requested updated premium amounts for Rutherford County's properties, casualty, liability, crime, cyber liability, dental liability, and voluntary firefighter accident for the upcoming year, in whereas the annual premium for property insurance coverage from Liberty Mutual is $910,706 effective July 1, 2021. In whereas the annual premium for casualty, liability, and crime insurance coverage from Brick Global is $1,276,500 effective July 1, 2021. And whereas the annual premium for cyber liability insurance coverage from Cowbell Cyber, Inc. is $48,199 effective July 1, 2021. Whereas the annual premium for dental liability insurance coverage from Admiral is $4,236 effective July 1, 2021. And whereas the annual premium for volunteer firefighter accident insurance coverage from Axis is $4,336 effective September 1, 2021. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the mayor be authorized to execute all required documents renewing the property casualty, liability, crime, cyber liability, dental liability, and volunteer firefighter accident insurance coverage with Liberty Mutual, Brick Global, Cowbell Cyber, Inc., Admiral, and Axis through Assured Partners as a broker effective July 1, 2021, and a September 1, 2021. In the accordance with the detailed coverage right now, a copy of this same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Have a second. Commissioner Phillips.
Question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Second paragraph on property insurance from Liberty Mutual. I'm not 100% sure that the figure I've got on my iPad was what you mentioned. Could you mention that again?
Excuse me, the, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you would, before we post this, paragraph two has two different numbers. The text and the numerical amounts are different. The 910 and the 924.
Okay, go to the, what is that, third page? That 924 includes the estimated endorsement to cover in Plainview. It's those two together. The 910, 706, plus the $14,278.
If that satisfies legal, I'm totally good.
Listen, does that got anything to do with that Plainview figure that we didn't have earlier?
Right.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Members, you're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Okay, we'll fix that. Oh, I see what you're saying. We'll fix that. Gotcha. Gotcha. Not ready.
I'm going to ask for amendment. Commissioner Dodd, do you mind making that amendment?
I'm going to motion to amend the resolution just read, change paragraph two that the numbers match.
Yeah, it's, it should be 924, 984. The written numbers to equal that.
Have a motion to amend.
Amend the second paragraph so that the text number and the numerical number match.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second? Have a second. Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Rather, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries back to the original motion as amended. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is N1E. This is actually a resolution to allow our retirees to pick up dental and vision. And just to be plain or clear, this is at their cost. This is a no-cost to the county. It's just giving them the option and the ability to pick coverage up to there that hadn't been offered before. Resolution, whereas the Risk Management Committee proposed the implementation of vision and dental insurance for retirees, and whereas analysis compared by Cigna and Mercer show that allowing the 369 eligible, 369 eligible retirees into the plan will not require any change to the ASO fee or funding rates. And whereas the premium rates per month for the retiree vision and dental insurance for calendar year 2022 will be the same as the employee will pay with no funding from the county. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the retirees be allowed to participate in the vision and dental plans for the 2022 calendar year. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I want to declare, uh...
Rule 10.
Rule 10. My wife is a retired teacher.
Okay, Commissioner Serino.
Rule 10.
Commissioner Gurley on rule 10. Anyone else? Commissioner Gammon.
Rule 10.
Rule 10. Commissioner Johnson, rule 10. Find the button.
Rule 10, after I get this thing off.
Anybody else on rule 10? Okay, we have a motion and a second. You're on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one, yes.
Okay, next up is item N1F, and this is actually coming to us because we actually got some information before we were expecting it. Normally, this would have been in next year's budget for our contract. A resolution, whereas the Rutherford County Property Assessor desires to amend an agreement with Pictometry International Corporation dated July 31, 2015, to provide current ortho and oblique aerial imagery, software license, and support for the entire county. And whereas the cost to Rutherford County for the amended service shall be in the amount of $296,763, payable in two equal installments, a shipment of imagery and the first anniversary of the shipment of imagery. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute an amendment to the agreement dated July 31, 2015 with Pictometry International Corporation. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to provide current ortho and oblique aerial imagery, software license, and support for the entire county. And additionally, let the general fund be amended as follows for appropriate funds for the first installment of agreement amendment. Increased expenditures and other capital outlay, $148,382, and a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $148,382. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Dodd on the second. Any further discussion? Questions? Be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes.
Our next item is N1G, and this is actually referring to the engineering cost for our proposed convenience center upgrades. And this is only for the engineering cost. Whereas Rutherford County desires to make improvements in the solid waste convenience centers at Rockville, Leanna, Weekly Lane, and Walter Hill. And whereas Energy and Land Infrastructure LLC has provided a contract for the engineering service equal to 6 and 25 hundredths, 6.25%, of the construction cost. And whereas the estimated construction cost for the four locations using concrete for the entire site is $4,579,609, with the engineering fee being $286,226. And the estimated construction cost of the four locations using the alternative of heavy asphalt for the entire site is $3,414,913, with the engineering fee being $213,432. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a contract with Energy and Infrastructure LLC. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein is reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the engineering services with improvements to the solid waste convenience centers at Rockville, Leanna, Weekly Lane, and Walter Hill, at an amount between $286,226 and $213,432, depending on the construction materials used, which accedes to 6 and 25 hundredths, 6.25%, of the estimated construction cost. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Kush. Any questions? Objections? On the board, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is N1H, and this is actually us borrowing on behalf of the Airport Authority. We've looked at this several times, but this is actually where we vote to say, let's do this. A resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $6,300,000 in aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds federally taxable of Rutherford County, Tennessee for the purpose of making a loan to the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom. Provided for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds, approving the issuance of not to exceed $6,300,000 airport revenue bonds of the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, approving a loan to the Airport Authority, and authorizing an intergovernal agreement with the town of Smyrna in connection with the loan to the Airport Authority. Resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Blair. Any discussion or questions? Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one, yes.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is N1I, I believe. This is actually a resolution for funding for schools, Rockville Elementary Annex, Rockville Middle, which I think is going to get about 20 classrooms, and Smyrna Middle Annex. And there's some renovations going on there. A resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $34,400,000 in aggregate principal amount in one of the more series of general obligation school bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, if any, premium, if any, and interest on the bonds. And I'm not going to read the other 25, 30 pages. I'll let y'all do that at your leisure. But resolve this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Allen on the second. I didn't want him to read the rest of the pages. You're on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one, yes.
Mayor Catherine. Before we go off into the next two, there's been a request for a short break.
All right. Without objection, we'll stand in recess for five minutes.
I think this is a point in the agenda where we might want to hold to see if we want to send out for pizza. I do not have a resolution for either item J, which is the State Farm building purchase discussion, or item K, which is Public Safety Building discussion. Mayor, I'll defer to you as far as...
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members on the State Farm building that was referred from property management, it was sent unanimous to Budget Committee. Budget Committee then chose to send it on to the full commission without a positive nor a negative recommendation for discussion by all 21. So that is before you tonight, so we will open the floor for questions or discussion. Commissioner Harris, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Me and Bill, on the day that State Farm was wanting to close the center down, I had called Jason Howell with State Farm and started talking to them about buying State Farm.
Hold your mic up a little bit.
Now, is it working? Now, the mayor took it from there. I had called and found who the management firm was, and I know this is, I don't understand why it'd be controversial, but anytime you acquire something that is of this amount of money, the first thing we need to look at is numbers. So I draw down a few things that I want to share with y'all. The building is 403,206 square feet, has 62 acres. It was purchased in 2014 for $64 million. The appraisal improvements of this building right now is, on the books, is $33,152, and that's at a 42% rate. The controller... The controller, who we had to talk to and had to get the grant money from, approved this. He said that we can use our grant money towards this. Another thing in here is, uh, there's over three million dollars of furniture and fixtures. Three million dollars, and that is going to be given to us. So that's also part of the deal, which we don't have to pay for, which would save us three million dollars. So now we're down from twenty-five to twenty-two. One of the things that we want to do, which Commissioner Reed has told us this many, many times, is they want to start a forensic center. And I did some numbers with him, and one of the things, I want to give you some numbers on that. We generate, right now, we have three hundred and fifty bodies. Every year, we take to Nashville for autopsies, and they give us a cut rate, which is eighteen hundred dollars each, for a total of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We had talked to ten counties around us, and of those ten counties, they have five hundred and fifty-seven bodies at twenty-one hundred dollars each. They're willing to come over to, if we have a forensic center, and to use us, which would generate close to about two-point-one million dollars. Utilities on this, with a two-year average, is fifty-seven thousand dollars a month.
A month?
Landscaping is fifty thousand a month, is fifty thousand dollars a year. Maintenance and custodial is two hundred thousand dollars. Now, if we develop a forensic center, we're going to be partnered with MTSU. This would be a partnership for the ages, and this could be a possible global facility. One half of the building would house sheriff administration and one hundred and twenty deputies. We know, when I was here three years ago, that one of the big things that we had to talk about was this jail getting too big, and we had to look at expanding it, building it, which we know would be in excess of around a hundred million dollars. With moving all these sheriff's deputies and moving all this administration over there, that would buy us time, a lot of time, before we had to do this. We're also going to staff EMA, EMS, fire and rescue, and the TBI is also interested in renting space. I talked, I'm in this business, I had talked to some builders, and they estimated that if we build this facility today, it would be three hundred dollars a square foot. Add that up to everything it is, that's a hundred and twenty million dollars. I think this is a sound investment. I think this is a smart investment, and I also think that their rate of return on this thing, whether we do anything or not, we will not lose money on this. We are going to be growing twenty-two people a day. That means government's going to grow too, and we got to have facilities to do this. Instead of building, we have it right there before us.
Others? Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, uh, my wife worked there for several years, and so when she heard that it might become available, she said, y'all ought to buy it. And she said, it's a good facility, it's been kept up to date, well-maintained. For those of us who went over and, uh, toured it today, of course, I've been in it a few times before, but it has been well-maintained. Even though it's been sitting for a year, there was no smell of mustiness, it's been taken, well-taken care of during that time. Everything is up to snuff. It's wired for the latest technology, CAT six, not CAT five, CAT six wiring throughout, fiber coming in. You know, a big portion of State Farm's business is utilization of data. And so, you know, it was set up to handle all of that type of stuff. It's very configurable. During her time there, she talked about how at various times they reconfigured a section. So part of the walls are movable such that they can be reconfigured without destroying the building. The amount of furniture there is astronomical, everything from cubicles to executive desk. Like I said, everything has been maintained tip-top. Parking should never be an issue, as they had seventeen, eighteen hundred employees there most of the time, so there's plenty of parking. I did the math also, Commissioner Harris, and, you know, compared to what it would cost us to build a building like that, if you've been to some of these departments that we're talking about moving there and watched them crawling all over each other, you know, it's not going to get any better. Unless you live in extreme far corners of Rutherford County, you see it every day. Moving trucks every day goes down my street, loading or unloading. So we're getting, I doubt if that's twenty-two a day, it's probably more like thirty or forty from what I'm seeing. So I really think this would be a great move. Plus, the opportunity, I know I've talked to EMA, and they said, they've looked for other places to do what we had to do during COVID, in terms of testing and vaccination and so on. They can't find another place, not without costing halfway it's going to cost us to buy this. So I think it's a very good investment for the county. It's looking forward instead of backwards, so that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Blair?
Took advantage of the tour of the facility today and was really impressed with many things that Commissioner Gurley also expressed, and really, like everything about it, my only concern is, at this point, is that this came out of budget without a recommendation. And I don't know if budget had all of the information that Chairman Harris just shared with us that night, and y'all have had so many budget meetings that kind of run together in my mind, what you've discussed. So would it be possible for budget to have a special call and reconsider the information that Chairman Harris shared and whatever other information that we could get as far as the partnership with MTSU and Maharry, and actually get a recommendation? And when we come back on the twenty-eighth, vote then for, you know, for possible purchase.
Mayor Ketchum?
Commissioner Piercy? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You can't see me, I'm so short.
I could not, I'm sorry. Stand up, Carol. I'm sorry.
I've also looked at the cost of this, and I think it'd be wise if we invest in this. I noticed it was move-in, you could move into it now without doing much work to it. I didn't see any damaged walls, carpet was not damaged, it was clean, it was very clean. So that's an asset to us, too. And there's several offices we could put in there.
Commissioner Piercy, and then Commissioner Harris.
To answer Mr. Blair's question about why it come with no recommendation, I made that motion because to spend this type of money, I thought the full commission needed to air, have their questions, and make that decision on this floor. So I made, and that's why we made, we didn't make it because we didn't have the numbers, we made it because we wanted it aired through this full commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
I forgot something important. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this and go forward with State Farm building.
That's an appropriate motion. That's our second. Commissioner Kush on the second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion.
Hang on just a second. Question by our attorney. The motion is, as far as the funding is concerned, would that be for the twenty-five-five as suggested? Would that be for the twenty-five-five and the money to be taken from the COVID-nineteen American Recovery Act?
Yes, do you want me to state it that way, or do we understand that?
Okay. Ms. Nolan says that it should be giving me that authority to enter into negotiations because they might not accept it, but we have to make the offer.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
No, and then motion to?
You just, okay, my motion is for us to proceed with State Farm by using the monies that's coming from our COVID grant fund to use for the acquiring this building.
Okay. Okay. Got a motion. He was on the second. Okay, second, Kush and others. Now, for discussion, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Just off the top of my head the other night, I had a list of questions, and so I tried to jot them back down tonight. My concern is, and of course, first of all, let me say, I completely understand the appeal of having a state-of-the-art facility right in the middle of town, all that land, infrastructure there, we have to look at it, we have an obligation to look at it. So I'm not saying that we don't need to do that. My feeling on this is, is that the vote is just premature. I feel like we have not done all of our due diligence in figuring out what this is going to cost us going forward in terms of operating costs. You know, the cost that you shared, Commissioner Harris, were past costs. I don't know what it costs to operate a morgue. I don't know what it costs to outfit a morgue. I don't have any idea what's going to need to happen to the heating and air conditioning system over there, because they're not going to want morgue air running through the whole building. You know, if you're talking about geothermal, that's another three or four million dollars, you know, on top of that. So, you know, we said at budget that, you know, there was a business plan, they would share with us the business plan and that model, and how else would flesh out. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen anything going forward about what this is going to cost us. All I know is what the building is. You know, and there was some discussion about the land, how great it would be to have that land for schools. We've already bought land in the Walter Hill area. Unless we're willing to do a county-wide massive rezoning, we're not going to use that land for schools. And not to say that there won't be other uses for it, there could potentially be other uses, but I don't think we need to cite schools as one of the things that we could use it for. You know, we've mentioned these relationships with partners, but we don't have a letter of intent, we don't have an MOU, we don't have anything from any partner who's telling us what it is exactly that they're willing to do to engage in this process with us. So again, I just feel like there's so many things that we don't know, that this is just a premature vote. So that's my feelings. And again, like I said, I completely understand the appeal, I get it, but for me, it's like telling me that there's this fantastic house out in Bellevue that I can give you a good price on, and that's all I know, so.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the resolution gives you the authority to negotiate with those that own the property. If they don't want to do it and we can't reach a suitable deal, then I would assume that we would come back and say, we can't do this, and it would come back to us for a final say on it. I understand that. There's, I think, if you've looked at what this so far in 2014 and so on, I think some entrepreneur will come in and buy this. If we don't put our effort out there to acquire it, some entrepreneur will come in and procure it, and then it won't be available at twenty-something million, it'll be available at eighty or ninety million here in a year or two.
Commissioner Key? Oh, I'm sorry, he's standing, he's standing. I'm sorry. Commissioner Gammon?
Mayor, I'm going to say, I have been involved in projects, that building, the last jail, I was deeply involved in that. I've been involved in other multi-million dollar projects, and I've had that experience. Going to this building, and what I've read and everything, I guess this building is in immaculate condition, and the people that were there informing us of it are the people that's ran it for twenty, twenty or thirty years, that are involved in that building. The, one of the things I asked about was the HVAC system, air conditioning, and all this, and it's got a five-star rating better than a hospital. They've redone filters, they've done this, the water system, it has a cooling system in it that's sealed, that is kind of a unique system. But one thing was great about it, you can shut down three-fourths of that building, it doesn't cost a dime to run it. They've got that setup in there to do that. It's got generators in it, it's got the growth potential for this, it is unbelievable. And the kicker is, kicker is about this, is at one point, and I discussed this with the mayor, this back with the industrial, which tax was it, Mayor, I can't, I?
EMS.
Yeah, EMS. And we were going to build an add-on at the sheriff's office side and do some addition on the jail to give the staff in the jail side more room, but also expand the area for evidence room, detective vision, all this. It looks like Hooverville out there right now. It just does. If you go out there, so many buildings out there, it's just nuts. And you can't imagine what the cost factor is on that. But here's the thing, this is a cost-efficient building, but the dollars that are going to be spent back today, and Ms. Nolan knows this, we're going to spend twelve million dollars back in two thousand and ten to do that expansion. There was supposed to be another addition on the jail put, but it's been put off. This has such expansion, there's sixty-plus something acres, it's centrally located. You're not going to get a chance like this again unless you build it yourself. Now, Hampton County went and bought a Kmart and did the same thing, one of the colors Kmart's, you know, that's an option there, too. But there's ten times less stuff that you have to do in this building, there's millions of dollars, when I say million, it's probably two, three million dollars worth of equipment in this building that stays with the building, including what's already there. You could go in the storage area, and my goodness, I mean, it was loaded. So it's a no-brainer to me. It's not a matter of, we can discuss it, nothing's going to happen tomorrow, there's going to be lots of discussion in the future, but it's not like we got to do this tomorrow, I agree. But same time, for the sake of public safety and things that we need to do, this is the best way to spend that money, and it's the cheapest way, because, you know, when you look at the cost factors ahead of us, the sheriff office, sheriff knows this, I mean, he knows they need to get more room out there, expand. This place has parking, I think, for eighteen hundred cars, if I remember correctly, and the building will hold fourteen, sixteen hundred employees. And if I remember right, we don't have but fourteen hundred general employees in the county. So that's not going to happen, so decisions have to be made by groups, there's going to have to be some kind of committee put together to other, the sheriff's office side of it, there's no doubt they're going to head out there in Minnesota, I would assume. But then you've got to have people that say, okay, here's what we're going to do, somebody's going to have to design it up, you're going to have to have an architect, so, okay, here's how we want to group things off. What's great about this place, there's not a load-bearing wall in that building, not one. Concrete, whatever's there can be moved, and it's been moved in the past, so you can form that to fit anything you want. It's just, it's just a no-brainer to not go this direction.
Commissioner Key?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have to say, I concur with Commissioner Allen in that we have the opportunity tonight, we came prepared, we have experts in the house, even if we're in pizza, to ask the right questions. Now, when we see a plan development come before us, we're a lot happier. We could just say, let's go buy this, and we could say, have a vote, and let's vote, and it would probably pass. But let's understand, many of us went to the tour today, or had previously gone to the tour, but let's ask some questions tonight. I think that we are prepared for that, and we've got the information, so let's dig a little deeper. I think we would be remiss if we didn't. And at some point, I'd like to suspend the rules and call our local expert, Denise Martin, at some point to come in and talk about the forensics aspect of it. Some of you may not understand the total implications of a forensic regional center. I mean, it sounds neat, it sounds cool, it sounds CSI, but I think that we can really learn a lot tonight if we just be patient, listen, and ask the right question, whether it's funding, whether it's what are we going to do with this, whether it's what the interests are.
Commissioner Reed? Chairman Reed, you recognize?
Commissioner Key is exactly right. As we went through the tour today, we had some of the top experts, I think, when you're talking about forensic, that went through that with us today. Denise Martin that we have on our own staff right now, we're very fortunate to have that individual with us, because of what she knows as far as forensic is concerned, and where she's come from to do that, but she brought along with us today, coming from Middle Tennessee State University, one of the tops in the nation, was with us today. And as we went about that, we looked at this facility and how it could be used. And just to let you know, we've spent, I guess, a week trying to put together this inf- information you've talked about right here, how it would be used, how we would put all this together. Also, we took a look at some other things over the past week, or how we're going to be affected if we don't have something like this. And we're all sitting in here, you know, when you think about death, we sort of put it aside. We don't want to talk about it. Nobody wants to talk about it. But Rutherford County is getting ready to look at something we've never looked at before. We're getting ready to throw a switch right here in this county come July, and we become a Level 2 trauma area right here in this county, over here at St. Thomas. Level 2, you know what that means? That means instead of a trauma situation heading to Nashville, it stops here, and it becomes our responsibility, our responsibility. And if that individual loses their life right here, it's ours. So when we look at this sheet of paper that you have in your file, of those numbers, those numbers changes the game for us. That's what we are responsible for. Totally changes the name of the game. So that means everybody coming out of these counties that have been going to Nashville all these years, they're not going to Nashville anymore, they're stopping right here, right here in Rutherford County, which becomes a part of us. With growth, you know, we're always talking about growth of the number of schoolchildren we have, and it means that we're overcrowded, and we have to bring in portables, or we have to build more schools. And we're already talking about how many more schools we're going to have to build out here, and the millions we're going to have to do there. Well, we never talk about these other figures of what we've got to do. And that facility we walked through today could help us with quite a bit of those things. And I wish that we could bring Denise up tonight. She's got a lot of this information you might want to know about what we can do in that facility. And you give her that opportunity to explain those things, and, Mr. Chairman, I wish to move that we suspend the rules to allow her to come forward.
I have a motion to suspend the rules without objection. Have a motion second, without objection. Denise?
Thank you, all of you, for allowing me to speak on this, what I think is very, very important and ripe subject. I would trust you'll forgive me for reading a statement, but I hope that this will make more efficient use of your time, and I won't lose track of this, many important points that I wish to convey. The white paper, which I believe you all received electronically by email this morning, has been updated to reflect recent or most current stats. It is valid now as it was when it was first drawn up four or five years ago, and the updated numbers reflect what was truly predicted back then. I'd like to highlight some of those points from within the white paper, as well as make you aware of changes on our immediate horizon that I hope will assist you in recognizing why the need for a Rutherford County forensic center is so ripe for discussion tonight, particularly in light of the opportunity the former State Farm operations property will afford us. For context, for those of you who may not know my background or haven't, I haven't had the opportunity to speak with directly, I do want to go over my background here in Middle Tennessee, that you hopefully have confidence that I speak with some authority on this subject. I began my career over two decades ago as an undergraduate student here at MTSU, when I had the opportunity to study under board-certified forensic anthropologist and current director of MTU's Forensic Institution of Research and Education, Dr. Hugh Bearman, who is with us at the tour this morning. After his introduction, I attained a position of forensic technician at the Nashville Regional Forensic Center, followed by a role of medical legal death investigator, and then a promotion to Director of Technical Services overseeing the technical staff and morgue operations. I next received a promotion to Director of Technical Services and Investigations to additionally supervise the Investigations Department there as well, and served in that position for over a decade. I attained both my master's degree and law degree while working full-time at the Regional Forensic Center, and also attained my law license in 2015. And since 2016, I practice law as a civil litigation attorney, as well as having the privilege of working at the Office of the Tennessee State Medical Examiner's Office as a medical legal death investigator, and I'm also a diplomat of the American Board of Medical Legal Death Investigators, which is our accrediting body. So I'd like to take this opportunity to reinforce the so many reasons why this is an optimal time for Rutherford County to have a forensic center, and why the former State Farm Operations Center is the prime location for it. As I know you're all very aware, Rutherford County has continued to grow in population in excess of state and national norms, and I'm confident that the 2020 census will document that Rutherford County has reached number four of the most populous counties in Tennessee, and that we are well on our way to number three. As of the July 2019 census, the county had exceeded 332,000 in population, and if we continue on the trajectory seen over the last 10 years, we will have likely reached, if not exceeded, the 350,000 population level by today's date. A proposed Rutherford County Regional Forensic Center is vital to the continued growth and health of our county and our region. Many national forensic advisory groups have written extensively about the need for the standardized professional death investigation to ensure the criminal justice and public health needs of our citizens. With the exponential growth in Rutherford County and surrounding areas, we believe that having a regional forensic center here in Rutherford County, the geographic center of Tennessee, would not only immediately benefit the citizens of our county, but provide a quality viable option for accredited medical legal service for our surrounding counties and region. Establishing and funding a Rutherford County forensic center would enable us to provide improvements in quality and in service, keep the funds involved in providing such forensic services in county, provide enhanced training and education to traditional and professional students, improve the productivity and efficiency of agencies that rely on medical examiner, forensic service reports and findings, provide a Rutherford County Response Center that could assist in county, regional, and potentially statewide efforts for emergency preparedness and mass fatality management. The Scientific Working Group for Medical Legal Death Investigation recommends that an autopsy rate of 1 per 1,000 population should be the industry standard or target. This would indicate that we should be autopsying around 350 cases per year with anticipated continual increases along with the population increases. This fiscal year, we are currently on track, as Commissioner Harris mentioned, with that 350 autopsy number, and ordering those from the Nashville Regional Forensic Center, actually at a cost of about 640,000. We currently pay 1,825 per autopsy. But this doesn't even include the 47,000 that we are paying in transportation costs, so we're very close to that $700,000 level. With the upcoming July 1st, 2021, opening of the Level 2 Trauma Center at St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital, as Commissioner Reed mentioned, our death numbers, along with those autopsy numbers, will undoubtedly increase. Currently, many of our Rutherford County trauma cases are transported to the Level 1 and Level 2 Trauma Centers in Nashville, and it follows that any related deaths that are pronounced in Davidson County come under the jurisdiction of the Davidson County Medical Examiner's Office currently. Having a Level 2 Trauma Center within Rutherford County, however, will mean that these trauma cases will stay in county. Additionally, we can expect to receive those trauma patients from surrounding counties that also have been traditionally transported to Nashville, Davidson County. It is unfortunate, but anticipated, that these types of patients will result in a higher rate of death, and that these deaths will fall under the jurisdiction of our Rutherford County Medical Examiner's Office. Ultimately, our autopsy rate will be affected both by having a trauma center located here, as well as the continuing booming population increases. Currently, there are five regional forensic centers in Tennessee, one in each of the following counties, Shelby, Davidson, Knox, Hamilton, and Washington. Over 50 counties, I think it's about 55 currently, including ours, currently send their autopsy cases to forensic medical, the Nashville Davidson County Facility, a for-profit private company. Many of those counties do base that decision on due to proximity for consideration of those transportation costs. It is our strong belief that a regional forensic center here in Rutherford County, again, the geographic center of Tennessee, would not only immediately benefit our county, but provide a quality viable option for our surrounding counties. As the white paper sets out, and has been voiced frequently at Medical Examiner Advisory Council public meetings, the National Forensic Center is at capacity. The body storage capacity of the Nashville Center's morgue has frequently been voiced to be beyond capacity and in need of expansion. Please keep in mind, however, that Rutherford County, one of the top five most populous counties in Tennessee, does not even have a county morgue. It is our firm opinion that having our own regional forensic center will, while demonstrating exceptional quality service, will improve turnaround times for our reports and death certification issuance. And we need to keep in mind that these enhancements will undoubtedly benefit families emotionally as well as financially, as they deal with closing bank accounts, filing of insurance policies and claims, and generally probating estates for their loved ones. These improvements will also provide quicker access to autopsy results that in turn will enable law enforcement to efficiently continue with their criminal investigations and/or swiftly close out non-criminal death investigations as appropriate. Currently, local and state law enforcement who are required to attend autopsy performance in Nashville have to travel outside of their assigned jurisdictions, often for extended amounts of time, while case assignments and autopsy schedule is being determined at the Nashville Forensic Center. This in turn encompasses negative productivity and expenditure of avoidable overtime costs in our county. A local forensic center facility with improved accessibility will assist law enforcement with more efficiency and better access to professional death investigation services. Another very important consideration is alleviating the responsibilities placed upon the shoulders of our county EMS supervisors, who currently perform the death investigation duties during their already high, very high caseload shifts, which may unavoidably detract from the main duties of providing emergency medical care and services. Furthermore, we should consider those transportation costs. They not only impact our county resources due for the services being performed out of our county, but that of the funeral homes that have to transport the decedents back to our county from the Nashville facility following autopsy, which unfortunately is often passed on to our families as part of the final dispositional funeral costs. There are potential partnerships with our local educational providers, in particular, obviously, MTSU, and particularly as relate to the Forensic Institute of Research and Education, the Forensic Science Programs, the Criminal Justice Programs, and the newly-formed relationship with Mahari Medical School. These will all provide mutually beneficial relationships, I believe. Forensic Science students would have the potential to observe and learn from actual forensic practitioners, along with potential access for internship programs, which are currently very limited but in very high demand. Medical students would have a local facility to perform rotations and also have internship opportunities at. This country is experiencing a dire shortage of forensic pathologists, and currently only have approximately half the needed specialists actively working. It is hoped that this relationship would quickly be forged with the medical school and this prospective facility, so that not only to provide hands-on training, but to promote the option of forensic pathology as a specialty focus, a program that would unquestionably be attractive to outside funding prospects. National reports, many of which were cited to in the white paper, emphasize the need to improve standardization and training of medical legal death investigators in this country. There is a nationwide need and shortage of these types of training programs, particularly those that could provide hands-on, practical workshops and interactive scenarios. The co-location of MTSU Forensic Institute of Research and Education would provide a unique and advantageous opportunity to create such a training opportunity and specialized education. The former State Farm Operations Center is the perfect site to host these types of unique specialized training events. This would undoubtedly benefit not only our own death investigation teams and those of surrounding counties, but also provide for another revenue opportunity, bringing in national as well as international students to offset some of the inevitable costs of the center that the center will incur itself. Tennessee does not currently have a facility with a capacity to handle a surge in deaths that would need to be investigated, potentially identified, autopsied, and/or stored in the event of a mass fatality scenario. The recent COVID-19 pandemic has shown us how other states' jurisdictions have poorly dealt with the realities of such a surge in deaths, something that could have easily been seen here. It has also been demonstrated that we were poorly prepared for a potential surge in death numbers, and that our existing regional forensic centers lack the capacity to handle a mass fatality situation, or, more importantly, support us if such an event was to occur in our jurisdiction. The increase in overdose deaths from the continuing opioid crisis, which national and local statistics demonstrate has been exacerbated by the pandemic, is predicted unlikely to be relieved in the near future if ever. The recent plane crash in Smyrna demonstrated how well our public safety agencies came together and worked together, but it's also a very stark reminder that, as tragic as it was, not only could that have been a higher fatality incident, given the location, on a holiday weekend, but that a large commercial aircraft crash would have overwhelmed this county, even with the assistance of outside agencies. There are other numerous, other real risk factors for a mass fatality event in Tennessee, and specifically in and around Rutherford County, that should not be ignored and certainly should be proactively planned for. Rutherford County is ideally located for a construction of a regional forensic center that will also accommodate cases from surrounding counties and a surge of fatalities in the event of a mass fatality scenario. It is firmly believed that this also would attract the attention of both state and federal investors, as well as being a prime candidate for existing grant funding opportunities. The opportunity for the county to potentially purchase the former State Farm Operations Center is an opportunity that Rutherford County should truly not miss out on. There is real potential for repurposing, remodeling a section of the building for a regional forensic center. The ability to also offer up space to MTSU, particularly with the forensic institute in mind, will avail Rutherford County the opportunity to forge an academic and training track for forensic students, forensic practitioners, medical students, along with local, state, and international forensic and law enforcement, and local law enforcement agencies. To also partner with other public safety agencies in the same building would appropriately center any response efforts in a real-world setting. Having such a forensic center in Rutherford County would require county investment, of course. We currently do not have the personnel required. We are currently paying for a for-profit private company in another county for autopsy vendor service at almost 650,000 per year, with a real expectation that this will continue to increase for the reasons mentioned earlier. This money could be kept within this county to pay for the salaries for autopsy and forensic investigation service, but with those resulting benefits that include improvements in quality and timeliness. The inclusion of mass fatality readiness would, in my opinion, become an investment focus for the state. There is a nationwide push for medical examiner offices to become accredited and for standardization of medical legal death investigators. Eligibility and application for accreditation would inevitably give us access to more independent funding from federal sources. Eventually, opening our doors to surrounding counties would also avail us to candidacy for additional federal funding under such grant programs to include those focused on strengthening the medical examiner system. Additionally, providing this quality option for autopsy service to our sister counties would ultimately enable cost-sharing of utilities as well. The Tennessee Department of Health currently reimburses the forensic centers, our existing forensic centers, and we could become one of them, for partial fees for performance of autopsies, as well as partial autopsies, anthropology and odontology fees... of autopsies as well as partial autopsies, anthropology and odontology fees, and partial cost sharing program for toxicology costs, which are distributed among the regional forensic center, and for all reports of investigation, something that we are not able to tap into without a regional forensic center. So these funding opportunities are actually available to us now and as soon as we start operating a forensic center. The zero-sum game should not be our only goal, however. Improved service, quality, and access to experts should be of utmost concern. Productivity of other agencies due to improvements in access, turnaround times, and report issuance, judicious use of county resources such as law enforcement and EMS overtime, access to enhanced training and education, and timely and informed decision-making about cases due to direct access to board-certified forensic pathologists should all be vital considerations. And to sum up, I know you're ready for me to sum up, I'm sure. There exists a prime opportunity to truly establish a flagship forensic center here in Rutherford County. There exists a clear need for expanded autopsy and forensic services in middle Tennessee, given the explosive population growth and continued drug overdose crisis. Clear needs exist at county, state, and national levels. The opportunity currently exists for community and academic partners here in Rutherford County to address these highlighted needs. With the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that the former State Farm campus offers us, there exists the potential for a one-of-a-kind center of excellence, providing independent forensic services, training, education, and research, impacting varied professional as well as traditional student bodies in both national and international arenas. There exists a growing need for disaster preparedness and a social consciousness of need to have independent forensic science centers that can fill the gaps in training for law enforcement and forensic scientists. We are currently expending almost $700,000 for forensic services to a vendor outside of this county. This amount will continue to increase along with our continued population growth and the arrival of that Level 2 trauma center. This proposition is truly vital to the continued growth and health of our county, and we currently have the opportunity to fill current needs as well as proactively plan for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Thank you so much. Commissioner Rather?
Everybody who's talking has valid, valid points. I agree with everybody. When I first heard about it, I had all kinds of questions, but I've been a licensed real estate agent, not active in it, well, kind of was, since the mid-'90s. I have a broker's license that I retired several years ago. I've been around real estate-related businesses since mid-'90s. This, in my mind, is an investment. It could be an investment for our future as a county, or at least, the worst-case scenario, we buy it, come find out we can't fill it, and blah, blah, blah. You can sell it for twice what we're buying it for, correct? At least. So it's good money, and it's not taxpayer dollars. It's a grant. And my understanding of the motion was that we were going to use grant money to enter into negotiations to buy the property. We're not voting on, are we going to buy it today or tomorrow or not? We're entering into negotiations with federal dollars. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So what do we have to lose? Let's move this forward. Let's see where it goes. And with that being said, I call for the question.
I'm still going to allow more discussion. This is a big step for Rutherford County. I have Commissioner McAdoo and Commissioner Dodd. Commissioner McAdoo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Then I have a comment.
I wasn't going to get up, but several commissioners over here pulled my coat tail and reminded me of the past. State Farm has always tried to be a good neighbor to us. The first State Farm building, which Bill can remember because his father was there, they tried to give it to us. They tried their very best to give it to us, and we didn't take it because the relatives in this area got to them. And that's a known fact. On this building that we're looking at, if we fill up every hospital in Rutherford County, which you've seen on news, cities was filling them up, setting up tents and so on and so forth, if we had to segregate people during another crisis, the State Farm building would be the identical, perfect spot as our backup. Now, she got up there and brought up some facts that I'm familiar with in my profession. A forensic center here would definitely, definitely benefit Rutherford County. Right now, you should see the situations we go through when we use the one in Davidson County. And a good example of the cost that she brought up, we went through this in Virgino when we built the juvenile center. It was so many complaints on there, it wasn't even funny. We couldn't pay for it, the operating costs in the future, so on and so forth. But the surrounding counties flocked to us to use that facility, and they're still using that facility. If we do a project of this magnitude, I guarantee you, with the growth in other counties, they will flock to us to use this facility. So it's a win-win situation. State Farm is trying to help us out because I think they're going to equivalent $25 million of their own monies that wasn't brought up tonight. So they're trying to do us a favor again, and I hope that we will pursue it a little bit better than we did the last State Farm building.
Commissioner Dodd?
I've been torn on the purchase, and everything was very persuasive until we heard that white paper read. So we are not voting on buying State Farm. We're tacitly voting on creating a new department that sounds exotic and huge with zero awareness of what it's going to cost. We're spending $630,000 a year in autopsies. The maintenance of the building is $989,000 a year. So keep in mind, when we vote, I think I know which way it's going, but when you vote, you are voting to backfill a building that we currently don't need. And the persuasive topic tonight that I'd somewhat resent, we've been compelled to support this building with a department that is yet to be created, has heretofore not been confirmed to be needed, and we're talking about future growth in existing departments, and we just heard a white paper on a department that doesn't exist. So please be cautious. If we do this, we're about to spend a lot of money.
Commissioner P., then Commissioner Gurley, and then Commissioner Gooch, and I'm going to make a comment.
Okay. I want to go back to Commissioner Blair's question, statement about taking this back to budget, and I appreciate you saying that. That tells me, and I think it's true, that you trust our budget committee to look at things fairly and correctly. And I don't know if you've noticed, I've been up there for a pretty good while, and I can usually tell you how somebody's going to vote before we have a particular issue, and most of you probably can too. One thing you may have noticed about budget is a lot of times we're split. We're either 3-4, 4-3, and that's because we have different opinions, you know, just like Commissioner Dodd just said. The reason this came, in my opinion, out of budget the way it did is because we have strong opinions on both sides of what we're doing. Now, my personal feelings, I want to talk about that for a minute. I'm like Commissioner Dodd. Here's a whole new department I don't know that much about. I do know there's some potential there. I don't know exactly what it would cost. I don't know what federal dollars would come our way for sure, okay? But to me, that's not why I would be voting on this tonight. This is an option in my book. This is only one option of many that we've heard. We've talked about putting a school there. That is a possibility, maybe, maybe not, you know? One of the things that I look at are positive needs to defer cost, and one is the Sheriff's Department. There's no question that we're soon going to be, well, he's already overcrowded in his administrative part, and soon when the judicial system opens back up, we're probably going to have a lot more people to take care of out there. So it's definitely going to be in our interest to avoid building a new jail, and yes, we've been discussing that in public safety, building a new jail, and I'm telling you, it's going to cost you a lot more than any $25 million. This would defer that, in my opinion, the cost of building a new jail if we're able to move our admin and patrol out there, of course, keeping our system in place and being able to expand some at the jail. That's one of the good things. One of the other big things, and this is a big thing, it may not mean anything to you if not been on public safety, is dispatch. Having a joint dispatch system has been a dream for us for many years, and this is something that Sheriff has said, hey, we can make this happen. We're able to have this facility because we'll have the room to do it, we'll have room where we can coexist in the same area. And that is really, to me, a very big deal, not to mention having some room if we need to expand our EMA into those areas, fire and EMS, we could put ambulances out there. But something that, you know, we say "future," this is where I'm coming from and why I actually advocate purchasing this building, is future use. My dad was commissioner several years ago, and he told me, he said, when you're looking at stuff, he says, you need to look ahead. You don't need to be looking at where we're at right now. And I'll give you, for instance, there's a building that sits kind of right over there. It's called the Goldstein Building, and I know you people in property management know we've got a problem on there. Now, we may find out that we're going to need to find a place to move those people for either renovations or, you know, whatever we decide. We've got reports coming back on the building. But that is a very specific problem that we're going to address, and it may not be this year, and it may not be next year, but I promise you, within the next five years, I believe something will have to occur with that building. Well, when it does, we've got our planning department, we've got our engineering department, we have our codes department, we also have the election commission over there, and we're going to have to find space for those people. The first thing we're going to have to do is run down the street, and whoever bought State Farm, maybe we can buy a corner of that lot over there, that 60-something acres that's floating out there, and then probably pay, well, our judicial building was around $70 million, is that right? So I promise you, it'll probably be a lot over $70 million just to look at putting a building up. So I'm telling you what my father told me, look ahead, you know? This is something that we're going to have to address, and I know we put off the judicial building, Mac, for how many years? For almost 20 years, and it raised the cost year after year after year. I think we started around $25 million, somewhere in there, and, you know, we ended up paying $70 million for the building. That's approximate. But in my book, this is an investment for the future and actually an investment for right now because we know we have specific needs. And I promise you, if we do a jail expansion, it's going to be more than this $25 million. If we have to come up with rental offices for our codes, planning, engineering, and election commission, I don't know what that's going to cost us, but it's going to be high. And I guarantee you, we're not going to be able to build a facility for $25 million to house that group of employees. And that's why I personally feel like we need to. Now, to get back to Mr. Blair, we have other commissioners just like Commissioner Dodd, and I agree with him. You know, I don't know what it's going to cost me to put a forensic center in there, but I'm not voting on a forensic center tonight. I'm going to have to see those numbers, and I'm going to have to crunch them before I say, hey, I'm going to vote for and be all in on another department. And I know Commissioner Allen feels that way, I think Commissioner Stevens does, and I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, but, you know, we're not all from Missouri, but we'd like you to show me. I want to see that cost. I want to know, because if I come up to you and I recommend something, I want to make sure that what I'm telling you is truth as far as I know it. So let's...
Commissioner Gurley, then Commissioner Gooch.
Well, Commissioner P. said a lot of what I proposed to say. Don't get tunnel vision on the forensic center. The forensic center is just one possible use. We have, as Commissioner P. said, uses right now. Go over to the Sheriff's Department, go through it, see how crowded they are. I don't know how EMA has handled what they've had to handle, even though they're a small department. The amount of stuff that they've had to procure and distribute and so on in the last year has been astronomical, and, you know, there's facilities there. That's two departments right off the top of my head. Consolidate dispatch, we almost had dispatch consolidated when the Sheriff Arnold thing came up, and then it, no, I can't blame them. So that went on the back burner and didn't happen. But, you know, the moving of all of our communications capability, even though they're operating under two different supervisions, they're still in the same location. And having worked in Williamson County, I've seen the benefits of that, of being co-located. And so we've got things that, and the thing is that the building's set up for that. It's ready right now. We can move those people in in a matter of short time once we get possession of it. We don't have to do a whole lot, and we can shut segments of it off. It's highly automated. It's very highly automated. They have an elaborate control system on all the systems in there, from security, from multi-layer security on. So as Commissioner P. said, we're not voting on the forensic center. We're voting on an investment of facilities to house Rutherford County government and especially most primarily public safety, and I think we will occupy it because we're going to have other agencies, affiliated state and federal agencies, that are probably going to want to co-locate with us in the future.
Commissioner Gooch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is for Mr. Christensen. The Finance Department had given us an email, I think it was dated June 15th, from the Controller's Office. Do you happen to have that email?
I don't, or I haven't...
Okay. Okay, if you look on page two, item number four says that basically that the purchase of this building would qualify for the federal grant. And it lists 12 bulletins. Are we committing to those 12 bulletins?
Let me answer that. In my discussion with the Controller, he asked me to put together these bullet points of how we thought that it would qualify based on the 151 pages of the COVID-19 American Recovery Act. The way that I read it, it actually said that capital expenses or capital buildings could be purchased with these funds. We wanted a clear definition of that, and so when I talked to him, he said, put that together, which we did, which you have on page two and three and four. Send it to him. You see on the very first page with his signature, well, it was his email that came from him. Let me see that.
It's on page two of the email.
Well, what I'm showing is page one at the very top. It says, "Thank you for your email in regard to the list of five proposed spending uses that Ms. Nolan and I put together. Items four and five seem, in our opinion, to be..."
Items four and five seem, in our opinion, to be reasonable uses. Item four is the State Farm building. Item five is yet to be discussed, which we'll be talking about, the emergency operations building. So he is the one, not U.S. Treasury, that will be doing the auditing. And that's what Ms. Nolan expressed in property management and etc., that she wanted something kind of in writing from the Controller's Office, which he responded, got it to us this week. And I think day before yesterday is when this came out. In their opinion, his department at the state will do the auditing. So it's not like we were concerned, okay, what if an auditor came in from U.S. Treasury and said, no, it doesn't qualify, then we got to pay that money back. This, I think, kind of gives us a green light to, to move forward, to use that tranche of money that's given to us from U.S. Treasury.
So these are, these are examples of things that would qualify, but we're not committing to.
No, sir. These are examples of, of our justification of the uses for that building and the health and safety public buildings as well, the bullet points there.
Well, that's what I thought. I just want it to be clear.
Yes, sir. Okay. Commissioner Blair.
And I apologize if I've come across as being an adversary of this purchase. I am not. But I guess my question is, well, the point is that today, the tour was the first time I'd ever stepped foot in that facility. And again, an immaculate facility. And I really, especially since it's been uninhabited for a year, I thought it looked really, really good. But the information that Chairman Harris just shared with us tonight, and this packet of information that was waiting for me when I arrived, I just saw and heard tonight. And I guess my question is, we'll have another opportunity to be together on June 28th. That gives us 10 days to consider, literally to sleep on this. And I'm wondering out loud, you know, what does 10 days do to us if, if we, if we postpone this vote to the 28th?
Well, the two gentlemen that you met today, Mr. Austin Benedict, and I can't remember the other gentleman's name, JT, yeah, Veronica knows him. And they work for CBRE, I think, CB Richardson's. And they are representing the company that purchased that building and leased it back in 2014 to State Farm. They are actively marketing this building and hoping that it's first come, first served. So let me, let me save a few moments, take a, take a moment to say a few things. Because Commissioner McAdoo hit on something that when I first got elected in 1990, he was on the commission, Commissioner Phillips came on, I believe, who was that? Carol Cook came on same time in 1990, and I think Deputy to the Mayor Salmon came on at that point in time. I was elected as Chairman of Health and Ed for the commission. They were in the process of building this new building that we're looking at tonight. We were looking for new space for the school board because they were still over on Memorial Boulevard in that little small building. So we had an opportunity. We took tours, Jerry Ochscher, some others that were forward-thinking Commissioners, we went down and toured the building. We got spooked, some of the Commissioners got spooked, I wouldn't say all of us. The ones that I just mentioned did not because they were forward-thinking, because there was some asbestos in the mechanical room, and we didn't know what, back then, what to do about asbestos until we finally decided to fly in an expert to tell us that asbestos is not a concern, it can be encapsulated, and you don't have to tear it all out and bring in the guys with the white suits and everything else. While it took up to 90 days to try to argue about that, a local developer here in town, many of us knowing, swooped in, bought all of it. And Mr. Pearl did quite well in subdividing that piece of property. And then there again, we started looking for another piece of property, which I negotiated the deal with Mr. Howard Wall, Johnny Jones, and three other partners to buy the current location where we are at South Gate. And now they're out of space because we didn't build large enough at that point in time. Our commission at that point in time was in a transition of newer forward-thinking folks who were coming on board and some who weren't. Many retired and most of them are, have passed on. I believe in this commission, that this commission is on the forefront of leading this state. This building will show that we are still at the forefront. We are now probably, when the census numbers comes out, will be the fourth largest county in the state of Tennessee. I expect this commission will be leaders in doing the right thing. And when you see a value of a 60, $62 million building, and you can purchase it for 25.5, and what we found out today, I found out, and I've been through that building four times, found out today, all, even the John Deere tractor that how many hours has got on it? You know, it's only got a few hours, it's a brand-new tractor and bush hog. All of that goes with it. You'll see in your packet that we put today, Mr. Mitchell went back, looked at it, and found out what they're paying taxes on, on their business personal property is about $3 million. That's in your packet. So if you take the $3 million, subtract it from the 25.5 of all the desks, chairs, paintings on the wall, the bush hog, that actually says that you're buying this building for $22,500,000, and you're picking up all that business personal property that we can use in many buildings in the future. It's the right time, it's the right place to make this purchase.
Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I know about 1990. I have to tell you this, since you brought this up just about, I guess, at the first of this year. I get these every now and then, but a lady here in Rutherford County had been collecting all of my columns over a number of years, and she passed away, and her daughter brought me that collection of my columns. And one night, I was sitting there just going through those and the newspaper where the county commission at that time was debating purchasing the State Farm building out there. And I sat there and read that column, and as I read that, I said, I hope they don't ever write a column about us like this. And I'm sitting here looking at the Daily News Journal reporter sitting up here. And as I read that, generally, y'all don't want that column written again because, I mean, it's, it's, it shows, it looked like a war, a battle between two different sides. I know Stan Vault was in that bunch and a bunch of them. But this is just really deja vu all over again. But, but I've seen that column, and no, I hope we don't do that.
Mr. Keen and Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we have to be careful here and not go too far away from what the nod has been given by the Controller. Looking at those, to Commissioner Gooch's point, there's 10 bullets here, 10 or 12 bullets. Out of those, at least half have something to do with a forensic center or merging of that facility. So if we, if we can say it's not about the forensic center, but if we very, if we go too far away from the nod that's given, and we just say we're going to buy it and then put in county offices or whatever, perhaps we stand a chance in not receiving that grant money. Is that correct? I mean, stands the reason. So let me just, for, and let me share with you my passion about this, why I'm passionate about this forensic center. This isn't something that's just come up because there's a shell and let's put something in there. This has been in the works for years and years. Excuse me. I remember when I moved to Rutherford County over three decades ago, remember the license plates? And you look on there, and there's a number that represents how large your county is. I think, at that time, I think we were 13, proud to be number 13. We were, we were, we were the younger brother as far as counties go. If we did that again now, we would be five, almost four. And that's something substantial. So we're no longer younger brothers. Younger brothers, we're looking to other counties to help us. We've got to look out for our own county. We're big brothers to many counties, many counties. It shows 10 or 12 counties that, of, of counties that rely on us for forensic-type needs. We're also big brothers for civic issues, religious issues, educational, many things that Rutherford County has, other counties want. And we're going to be in the top four out of 95 counties. We've got to move from big brother to adult. There are several things that we can be adults on. This is a good example. Let me educate you really quickly. My background was, I was in the Marine Corps for several years, got out of that and I opened or started a, a security business where I was a private investigator. That started my passion for forensics, for research, for investigation, not so much the, the criminal aspect of it, but the, to know more, to learn more. So I, I became a teacher of forensic science at Eagleville High School. Taught there for four years, from 07 to 11. At that time, we had seven high schools. We were the seventh high school to start teaching criminal justice, forensic science. It was a dual class, wasn't even a pathway at that point. Now I count 11 high schools, okay? So when I taught that course, this was in 2007, 2011, that was the most popular course, criminal justice, forensic science. All right? I was able to attend Dr. Berryman, if you don't know Dr. Berryman, well, he's world-renowned anthropologist, forensic anthropologist, has done so many digs, high-profile digs, recoveries, things like that. He's at our disposal and wants to be involved in this. So I had the opportunity to work with him over summer, had the opportunity to work at TBI over, over summer, had the opportunity to do a searchy latent fingerprint course, all as an instructor for criminal justice. It was brand-new, just setting the standards. So now you fast forward to today, out of the high schools that we have, only, only one high school has one instructor for criminal justice, forensic science. The others have two and three instructors, and other classes are full. Now, here's what we faced with criminal justice slash forensic science. Forensic science has always piggybacked on criminal justice. CSI is real, guys. Wouldn't you watch CSI? Now, there, that's Hollywood. You never get it done in an hour. Okay, I promise. But all the, all the systems, all the, the tests, the results, everything has to be done, okay? So that, what that says is that there is an interest. One of the stats that I saw that is very interesting to me, I'll share with you. Occupational alloc handbook, a basic forensic science technician, medium pay, 2020, $60,000 a year. Okay? So not only would we employ these, we would create these, we would educate these types of people. And that's basic. Bachelor's degrees at entry level. Job outlook for the next 10 years, 14% growth, which is much faster than average. That's substantial. So here's what's happening. We've got each of these classes that have criminal justice slash forensic science. It's a pathway now. First year, it's criminal justice one, second year, criminal justice two, third year is when they introduce forensic science. But ladies and gentlemen, forensic science is, is huge, and we can't touch that in high schools. Right now, forensic science is probably about one-eighth of the course curriculum that is taught in that pathway because it, there's, there's not an opportunity. So when I'm talking about the forensics, the, the areas of forensics, I'm talking about medical legal, which is, which is autopsies. I'm talking about serology and toxicology, which is fluids or chemicals that come into the body, DNA processing, that's huge. Forensics odontology, teeth, forensic anthropology, digging, bones, people, and forensic entomology, insects, okay? Opportunities to learn and teach and have all that in a facility, okay? Careers within forensic science that aren't, so when, when a student would say, Coach Rod, hey, how do I, how do I, what do I do with my forensic degree? Well, we did an internship at TBI too. I took them on field trips at TBI. This is what you can do, this is cool. That's the state level, okay? But, but there's not many opportunities to pursue that as a pathway. But, but such as forensic science technician, medical examiners, which require a medical degree, forensic pathologist, medical degree, forensic psychologist, latent fingerprint examiners, and criminal investigators, okay? These are things that we could promote here locally. And it's not so much being a footprint for that, but it is about being the adult and taking care of Rutherford County. So don't dismiss the idea of letting this be important. Yes, we have an opportunity to purchase State Farm, but look at this reasoning. And, and we're not talking about, you can't, you couldn't put, the forensic center would be so small in comparison to 400,000 square feet. But it is an opportunity to get this grant money, and it is an opportunity to move forward and benefit Rutherford County first. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Keen brought up one of my questions, and I want to follow up on that a little bit farther. If we take out the forensic center, the COVID-19 morgue, and the autopsies, what percentage of the use of this building would actually be related to some kind of COVID-19 relief? And I, and the next question's going to be what percent, like how much of the purchase of this building has to be for something COVID-related to qualify for the grant?
Okay, so it's, to me, I look at, it was all many things. For me, what was compelling on our argument is what we were already using it for, is that we had, you know, this COVID response, and that's what gets, kind of gets me, you know, to make sure that we had it covered. And if you see in there is the third, well, y'all, y'all been around, y'all know, is that we use this, we use this facility. And the funds, it's like, what are you doing? How did it help you in the response to, to this pandemic? How will you use it in the future? So we definitely, we could say, we used it. I mean, we, in the pandemic, this was a thing for the testing and the vaccination. So we already know that we've used this for this purpose. It was important for me that when we were pulling this together, explaining to the Controller what are the things. And while one says, you know, more autopsy facility, but number two, it's two and three and four, two, to consolidate communications, and three, for the sheriff administration spaces, we were telling them, these are the things that we are contemplating.
So are those things in writing, though?
Yeah.
I mean, for the sheriff, the moving staff?
Yeah, under number four, it says, the county envisions using this site for the following purposes, morgue and autopsy facility in association with local universities, two, consolidate communications, three, sheriff administration space enforced, provide space for the continued response for COVID-19 and for future pandemic response. I mean, that, it was important for me to, to try to put all the cards on the table and say, it's more than just the forensics. It's all these other things that we're talking to.
Well, when I read this, it looks like the purpose of us using the grant money is all COVID-related. And then when you take out the morgue and the forensic center and the autopsies, and then you add in dozens or hundreds of county employees that had nothing to do with COVID, I mean, it's, to me, it's kind of misleading to, to, to use a big part of the space for something that has nothing to do with COVID relief. Is that going to affect us with the grant?
So I'm going to back up and say, there's more to this on the monies. And one is, the Sheriff's Department employees, where their salaries was, what their salaries were, an allowable expense to get COVID funds, along with detention and ambulance and firefighters. So this public safety response, it was assumed because they are in the public dealing with, it was COVID response. So with that theory and looking at some FAQs, it, to me, it gave So, with that theory and looking at some FAQs, it, to me, it gave, you know, I think I told you all in the beginning, I was kind of nervous, because as you read it, it was all health, 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 health. But then they expanded to this other stuff.
Okay. Now, do we actually have this money yet?
We do not have this money, but it is coming, but we don't have it today.
It's coming. How long has it been coming?
Well, initially, we said, after May 15th, kind of after that date is when we were expecting it. None of the counties that I am aware of in the state has it in the bank. But it has been allocated.
Well, just because something's in the budget doesn't mean there's money to pay for it.
Well, I agree. You know, it's, it's like, we want to make sure it's in the bank before we did anything.
Well, that's, that's a great point. People need to know, this money is not sitting here waiting for us to spend it right now. We're waiting for it. So, if we obligate ourselves to buy something and don't have the money for it, then what do we do? Now, this morgue does seem to be a big part of what we're doing, and, and that's been kind of the sales pitch from, from the get-go. I want to know if the staff and the salaries and benefits and so forth will cost $566,516 or less, or if it's going to cost more than that to run the department. I mean, how many staff members will we need? How many assistants? How many directors? How many, I mean, what are we looking at with staff, just ballpark?
I've not seen.
So, if we take the $688,000 for the utilities, plus the $50,000 for the landscaping, plus the $200 for the maintenance and custodial work, and then add in the lost property tax revenue, which is $294,000, that's $1.233 million of cost. And according to this estimate here, if we have 557 autopsies at $2,100 per autopsy, plus the money that we're saving, that's $1.8 million. So, the difference between the $1.8 and the expected revenue and then the cost is $566,516. So, if the cost of that department is more than $566, we're in the hole if we're basing all this on the morgue. Now, I noticed on the white paper that Dr. Martin brought us, it says we're paying $1,850 per case now to send it to Nashville. And we're assuming that all these people are going to come to us and pay $2,100 per autopsy. And 66 of those are in Sumner County. So, Sumner County is going to drive 30 extra miles to pay $250 more per autopsy. I, I don't know if that's going to happen or not. I agree with Commissioner Blair, but if we can just push this off to June 18th, I would like for the mayor to contact these other counties and see if their mayor will send us some kind of letter that says, "Yes, if you build this facility, we will send our autopsies to you and pay $2,100, uh, $2,100 per autopsy." I mean, that's just a, just a good faith thing that says, "Yes, we'll, we'll support this project if you do it." If they won't do that, it makes it harder to move forward with this. You know, we've, we've been working on assumptions and hopes, you know, the money hasn't come in yet. I'm not against the project, I'm really not, but I just want to know how it's going to work and what it's going to cost in the long run. So, I think if we can get some of these questions answered, then there might be more support to move forward with it. And so, that's why I voted no at Budget Committee. Like I said, I wasn't against the project. I've, I've just been against the process so far and feel like there's a lot of gaps here that we need to fill in with basic information. And I think that we can get some of that in the next 10 days if we reach out to these counties and see if they will send us a letter that says they'll use our services if we provide it.
Ms. Nolan, did we not receive an email from U.S. Treasury saying that, that our application had been accepted? That came in earlier this week, I believe. And they would be in touch, but the money should be coming forward. And talk to Mayor Reed. They have already received their tranche of money from U.S. Treasury, and they have already allocated it. It's guaranteed that the money is coming.
The money's coming.
The money's coming. We don't have it yet. We won't be able to negotiate this deal.
The municipalities have, is what we're hearing. The counties don't, but it's coming. It's already been, it's allocated.
But our application has been accepted. And that was a notification we got from Treasury, so we know the money's coming. Now, there's no guarantee that these other counties are going to do that, but I think it's been anticipated in negotiations with these other EMS directors that because Nashville is so overcrowded, they're even getting cases as far away as Jackson, and they can't process them fast enough at the facility in Nashville. So, they're going to go to where they can process it, have closure for the family, et cetera. Commissioner Gammann, and then without objection, I'm going to call for the question.
Well, I'm, I want to say one thing, and I'm calling for the question, if I can say it. But I have worked approximately 50 homicides. I have set in dozens of autopsies. I've been in Nashville. You have to wait three or four days or more to get results back while you're trying to investigate that homicide. You can't even search the body down there until the forensic pathologist goes through the pockets now. That's what they rule.
And don't, don't you have to stay there? You can't leave the body if you're doing an investigation. You have to stay with the body, right?
Well, once it's transported to Nashville, it's out of your hands. That's the situation. Used to, in a morgue, we, we would go through the body, take pictures, fingerprint, and go through the pockets. And gee, maybe we'll find a title to a car, which we did before, on top of this, and on top of that. But I'm telling you, the years that's going to be ahead of us, I still think, believe, there's going to be much discussion left to do. We're just saying, let's move ahead. There's no decision on the forensic. I'm for it 1,000%, because I know what they can do with Mary and MTSU and the training of detectives in this whole county, make them better investigators. And they'd love it. But then also, the biggest issue I have is, I think we still had it in the budget. I don't even know what the number is now. There was 27 deaths of overdoses, but you also still have homicides and suicides and this and that. They have to be worked. But the kicker is, is I want to know who killed these, these kids and everybody else. I want to know. If we've got the ability to do it, then by all means, we're going to do that. So, with that said, I'm calling for the question.
That's not debatable. We're on the board, members. Please cast your vote. All right. All right, current, all right, hang on. Can we wipe that out? The current, the current question is to call the question. That'll be our first vote, is to call the question. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
20 yes, 1 no.
It passes by 2/3. Call the question. Question's been called. Would you like to have the motion re-read, Speaker Portem? Madam Clerk?
The motion was made by Harris, seconded by Kush and others to move forward and vote for the 255 funds taken from the COVID grant fund. And have the motion...
Yes, that, that's correct. Attorney says yes.
And have the, the mayor un-negotiate. I got it.
All right. Did everybody understand? Members, we're on the board. Please cast your vote. I think it's working.
I pushed change vote, and it was allowing me to vote again, so I don't, I don't know.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record a vote.
17 yes, 4 no.
Motion passes. Next item. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, you ready to order that pizza yet? We're now going to enter in discussion of the public safety buildings. And again, I do not have a motion, but we are open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, we'll open the floor for discussion. This has been worked on for quite some time. I believe we first started looking out in Rockvale area. We thought that we might be able to get one or two. Actually started out talking about two, one in Rockvale and one in Kitterell, building this type of facility. Had no idea that this grant money would, would come our way. It was a, it was a windfall for our community as it is in other 5,000 counties across the country. And many cities are getting this type of windfall. But this would, it, it will allow us to put these type of critical services in our rural community in six different locations. So, we'll now open it up for discussion. Chairman Reed, do you recognize?
Commissioners, you may remember last month, I stood up here and I said, "I would be back." And I'm back. And what we're talking about and what the mayor has discussed right there is the possibility of building six public health and safety buildings encircling the city of Murfreesboro out in the rural area of a county. I've had the opportunity over the past month to not only talk about in my district, but other districts too, and explaining what these are doing and, and what they can possibly do for us in the future. The thing about this is, this is a once, I call it a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. For Rutherford County, we have never done this before, never. And I think this gives us an opportunity by using those same funds we've talked about here tonight and doing it with these buildings. The thing about this, it places out there within the rural area, buildings that can be used, much like what we've talked about here tonight for a situation where if we have a pandemic again. And those of us that have participated within the pandemic over the past year or better, whenever we were looking for things to use or things to do to, to work with the pandemic, we always said, "I need," or if we had, "we could do this." Well, when we started talking about some type of facility of what we were talking about in these areas, and then we come up with this idea of building these different buildings, and then we come up on designing and what we had, all of a sudden, we called these, or I did, I called them, these are, these are our, "I need" buildings. That finally, we had a buildings that we could once place out here in these communities that if a pandemic come back or anything like it, we would have the opportunity to have a building where we could use out in these rural areas. Rather than bringing everybody into Murfreesboro to find one central place, we could use these for vaccinations, testing, or other things like that. They could also become areas for education as far as anything of this type too. They contain ambulants. This would place our ambulances out there on the outer edge of the city of Murfreesboro, outer edge of Smyrna and some areas, where our ambulances are not coming out of the major traffic area trying to get to another place, but they are coming from these stations and going inward to Murfreesboro. And we're not fighting that traffic that way. But they're also sitting there with also a fire department located there, as well as an office for a deputy, where when they're out there on patrol, they can stop there, taking care of their records, taking care of anything else. Somebody even mentioned to me, they think it's a great idea to have these offices too, where individuals might need to talk to a deputy, and they see it there. They'll go and speak to that deputy there, rather than having a patrol car sitting in the yard where they don't want their neighbor necessarily seeing a patrol car sitting in their yard. But these will be, six of these, somewhat in a circle. And I've told you before, I call it somewhat like a spider web, if you take a looking at Rutherford County. And we see these as a possibility of something to, to use for these purposes that we've talked about before. And everywhere that I have presented this, I presented them to Alliance Club. And whenever I'd done that, they thought this, they said it's a great idea. They thought it was something that, that could really be beneficial to the people of Rutherford County. And I've even heard the term said, you know, "This will be something that'll last us for 50 years." Because, you know, you got to look at, and I think Commissioner P. will tell you this, "We haven't done this before, and this will be something that we can do that." If it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to go ahead and make a, make a motion, if I could.
That's, that's an appropriate motion. Is there a second? And a second. Now, discussion, continue. Are you through, Commissioner?
Full motion, if you'd like me to, one that we, understandable, if you'd like that to be.
Yeah, that'd be good for the record, yes, sir.
For the record, that we construct six public health and safety buildings to be located on county property at Rockvale, Christiana, Kitterell, Last Casses, Walter Hill, and Amwell. These buildings, we funded with the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Okay. And a second? Got a second, Commissioner Harris, all right, Commissioner Dodd, and then Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you. Pettis, are, six buildings? Six? Are all six staffed 24/7?
The way they will begin with, as far as staffing is concerned, the one at Walter Hill will be 24/7, because we'll already be using a crew that we have there. The one at Rockvale will be staffed 24/7 with a new crew, when that one is completed.
With a new crew, I'm sorry.
They'll have a new crew, because we've already applied for a grant to get that, that crew to place there. The one at Christiana will be using the Christiana Volunteer Fire Department. The one at Kitterell will be using the Volunteer Fire Department. The one at Last Casses and Amwell will be using their volunteer fire departments.
Thank you. So, five will be not staffed. One will be staffed with a grant that...
Four. Four will be using volunteers, two will be using full-time.
One of which were waiting on a grant to hire four more firemen. Is that correct?
Who what?
Four are volunteers?
Four, four, four of the stations will be under volunteers.
Okay.
And two will be under full-time fire.
Both of which have full-time firemen already on staff?
Uh-huh, that will be on staff, uh-huh.
And they're already hired?
Yeah. Well, the one at Rockvale, we are, we have applied for the grants to use in those, and we'll be working with those.
So, they're, they're not hired. To be just transparently clear...
Well, so you're looking at building the building for eight, it's going to take 18 months to build all of this.
Currently, okay. And, and I, I support the, the concept of, of safety, and I understand the logistics of, of having personnel closer to, I support all that. But I just want us to know, when we say yes to free money, we're saying yes to staff, or we're building empty buildings, we're building buildings that aren't staffed 24/7, or we're building buildings that were waiting on grants to staff. So, when we say yes, the likelihood of increasing our fire department by a significant percentage is probably on our horizon. Would you agree with that?
Not necessarily. The one at, the reason for Walter Hill in particular, we're moving... The one at, the reason for Walter Hill in particular, we're moving them out of an older fire station?
Agreed, agreed, and-
They gotta come out of there.
We're having-
Rockvale does not even have a fire station.
Agreed.
And we're fairly well certain that on these, what we applied for there, on those grants, we'll probably get those firemen there at Rockvale, and we'll work with what we have there.
And I will finish this comment and just say, we're, we're developing a habit of having free money, building wonderful opportunities, I agree. And we're probably gonna get a grant for four more men, and we're gonna have to fill these buildings. So just know, when we vote this, we're expanding another department by a considerable percentage. We're hitting our unassigned fund balance this year by in excess of $30 million to balance the budget. We've got schools coming up, so building free buildings and staffing them in the future is going to cost us. Just please be aware of that and consider it. When you vote yes, we're voting for new departments and increasing staffs.
I have Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Johnson, and then Commissioner Gertling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments about this project are the same as the prior vote. I'm not opposed to this. I think it's something we're gonna have to do eventually. It's, it sounds like a good idea, but there are, again, there are so many unknowns here. When do we hear back about the brick grant?
Supposedly by the end of June.
So if we vote to spend the coronavirus money that we don't have yet to build this, does that cancel out the grant money? Or can we swap it?
Oh, it would be in addition too. I mean, if, if we get the brick grant, that was covering 20, 75% of the cost.
But we can use the COVID money to do the other 25%?
I don't know about that.
I think so. I think so. But let me say something about the, let me say something about that brick grant. The brick grant is up for competition in all 50 states.
Highly competitive.
All 50 states will be competing for those dollars. It was a long shot. We applied for it, but I don't think we're gonna get it.
Well, I remember one of the comments being was that if we voted to go ahead and do this, it might affect us-
Different kind of, different kinds of funds. I mean, different kinds of, right. The, in the brick grant, I didn't want votes to say, "Yeah, but if that don't get that, we're gonna get it." Because implying for that grant, it was, "We need this because we don't have other funding sources, that's why we need this grant."
Well, I mean, if we get that one, couldn't we use the COVID money for something different?
Yes.
So why would we not wait until we find out if we get the brick grant money before we vote to spend the COVID money we don't have yet? I just don't understand what the rush is on this.
Well, well, and the other part is that, you know, we're only gonna have 32 million, half of it this year, half whenever we get it, and the other half 12 months from that anniversary date. So you're not gonna-
So we can't even build this for-
Have all the funding in place for all-
Can't even build it for a year and a half? If we get it? I mean, the, the CTS representative said there was a possibility that the federal government might take that second half back and put that toward an infrastructure bill.
Right.
So we, we don't know. I mean, we've got to have a plan, and we don't know what the, I don't understand why we can't wait a couple of weeks and see about this other grant first.
I wouldn't put a lot of stock in what CTS representatives said, and talking to Mr. Bowdery, who was here the other night, and he said that unfortunately, since he came from CTS, there are so many new people that have moved in from other states that they sometimes make statements that probably a seasoned CTS person wouldn't have made in the state of Tennessee. So I take Mr. Bowdery's comment over what some young person who made that comment had only been at CTS for a year. That's just my opinion.
So Mr. Bowdery disagreed with the comment in that email that was sent?
He disagreed with the comment that came from CTS saying that they may take it back.
And then what about the comment that said, "We should hold off on any projects for 30 to 60 days and make a priority list before we commit to spending all the money"?
He didn't tell me that personally when I talked to him.
I mean, that was in the, that was in the email from CTS again.
But he told me after that came from CTS, okay, what the comptroller said, he told me personally, when I sent this letter to him, he said, "It sounds like what you're telling me, send me, put that in letter form." And then this one is, came back since that has been issued, that based on their opinion, that they were all reasonable uses. Commissioner Johnson?
Are you through, Robert? Okay, I've been exercising the patience of Job. Clarification from Lisa. Lisa, we have a backup plan for a grant application already for two, correct? In the event we, we get that approved, that would lessen the impact on the COVID money, correct? What's the status of that? Am I correct on that, that we've got an application already on file for-
No, we have, we have applied for the brick grant, that we don't know. But the discussion was, Commissioner Reed, you'll have to remind me. I believe I'm remembering, we are at least gonna do two. Not funded yet, but the kind of, the feeling I got was if the brick, prior to knowing about this American Rescue Plan, it was, "We're gonna go after this brick grant to try to get five. If we can't get that funding, we will move forward with two to be funded some way," which for me was-
And had you not figured that we would go to the bond market with that?
Right, that's, that was it. Once we knew whether or not we got the brick, that would be our next trigger, then it would come back to y'all, again, assuming that this money wasn't available, that you would then authorize additional funding through, through a bond issue. That's kind of what track we were on until this came available. And then it's like, okay, this, this looks like it could be a, a use for the American Rescue Plan money, but we may have to stage it. We may not get to do all things we talked about tonight in one fell swoop. It may have to be part, that part this year, part the next year.
Right. Commissioner Gertling?
Yes. What I think we're voting on is, I understood the motion to move forward with, with this, but with, from these COVID funds, obviously, if we don't have the funds, we can't move forward. We'll have to wait until we have the money to start letting contracts and engineering, and we've already done some preliminary engineering and design work, but to actually start construction on these buildings. So obviously, we can't build a building until we get the money. But one of the things I'd like to address, what Commissioner Dodd brought up, yes, we're only planning on staffing two of these with full-time firefighters in the immediate future. But we've got these volunteer fire departments out there. We've got Kitterell, Last Casses, Christiana, and Amville. Amville maintains people at the, this current station, there on One Mile Lane. Of course, that's, a lot of that area is being encompassed by Smyrna, has been annexed by Smyrna. I think they would love to have something out Amville way, of the Akala development out there, 500 houses with more apartments and houses and commercial developments gonna increase the need for fire protection out there. There's a problem. You know what that problem is? There in the old school building, they had a little annex added on to it, that the roof is so low that you can't put a modern fire truck in it. So we have to keep an old junker out there in order to have response from Amville. Amville, I think, would gladly staff that building if they had a building to staff, and we could put a modern, current, vintage fire truck there. You can't do that right now. You've gotta keep an old fire truck there, because it physically won't fit in the building. You'd take the roof off the building if you drove, and the roof off the fire truck if you drove it in. So I think while there's been some decline in volunteerism and so on, there's still a lot of volunteers out there who, if they have a place to go and a place to stay and to, to work, would volunteer and man these facilities. Until such time, eventually, I've said it for several years now, eventually, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pass a fire tax. That's the fair way. It's offset by your reduced ISO rating and your insurance, it keeps your insurance rating low, and insurance premium's low. So that's, that's the good way to do it. Put that burden on those people who are benefiting from it. We can do away with fire protection, period, and watch a premium go from $400 a year to $1,500 a year. That homeowner can pay an extra $100 a year and keep that premium low. So that's just real good business sense. I think if we sell the fire tax in a proper way in the coming year or two, people will see it. But that's what we're gonna have to do it, do, but there's gonna be people, we're gonna get the volunteers, they'll man these buildings.
Commissioner Johnson?
One more comment, and then I'm gonna call for the question. Each of us have been elected up here to do a job for the citizens of this county. So I'm a firm believer in either lead, follow, or get the heck out of Dodge. So we need to make a decision on this, and I'm calling for the question.
Commissioner Phillips? Be voting on the question. After vote on, call the question. You can call for the question, but I didn't recognize you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. This might not mean a lot to anybody, but my wife says that the, my supper's in the microwave and she's going to bed. And I know that doesn't mean a lot. The discussion that we had before and the discussion we're having right now, no matter the difference of opinion, is healthy for this county, and I appreciate that. The way I look at these buildings is that we're gonna apply for money that the federal government is willing to give us to build these buildings. If that money doesn't come in, we do not build the buildings. Is that correct?
Except for two.
Except for the two we've been talking about for the longest time. Is that correct? Is that the way I understood the motion? To, to use COVID-19 relief fund-
To me, that's the American Rescue Plan monies, is to use that for these-
Very good. One of the other things that I think that we as a community, Rutherford County, are losing, as we continue our sprawl across the county, we're losing some of our identities. We're losing, where is Walter Hill now? Where is Rockvale? Where is Kitterell? Where is Amville? We're losing that. These centers will reaffirm those, the identity of those communities, and I don't know how much that's worth, but to me, and those people who live in those communities, it's worth a lot. These will be centers that they will go to in the event of an emergency in their immediate community. And, and it's also for emergency responders, it's also for the sheriff's department, it's more than just firefighters. And we spend a lot of money without all of this discussion on schools. If you guys remember, we spent 134 million bucks to expand three schools, and we didn't ask any questions of how much it's gonna cost to operate those things, and we just do it. And we sit here time and time and time again and argue over public safety. And to me, there is no more important way for us to spend our money as we go forward over the next 20 years than to support our public safety department. We need to support our firefighters, we need to support our, our sheriff's department, we need to support these people and give them all that we can possibly give them. And this money, although it's, it's, it's going to cost the taxpayers money, it's not gonna cost the taxpayers nowhere nearly as much money as if we just built two, and then four years later, built two more, and then four years later, built two more. This is an opportunity that my mind, in my mind, we need to take advantage of right now. We need to identify where these places are going, we already have, and we've already put together a plan, and I think that plan is workable. And to say that our public safety department doesn't need to grow, and we don't need to spend more money there, I think is, is not approaching what we're doing with our school system. We rarely question the need for a new school. We don't. We spend that money. But our public safety has a place that we need to fit into that conversation as we go forward. I think, I think that we need to tell these people that you're as important as any other department in this county, and we're looking out for the next 20 years and not just trying our best to figure out what we're gonna do for, for right now. And I'll second the motion to call the question, and I don't know what my wife's got for me in the microwave, but I know it'll be cold, and I know she'll be in bed, so I'll have to push the button to warm that up, and maybe we can get out here in a little bit. But I, I just wanted to, to say that to offer a certain identity, identity throughout the county, I think is really important. I think we're losing that, month by month, a little bit more and a little bit more. And this will have an opportunity for us to say, "Hey, there's Walter Hill. That's where it is. That's where Walter Hill is. That is where Rockvale is." So it has benefits above and beyond just fire protection. And, and I think we are looking forward, planning for the long term for our county, even longer than this commissioner will probably be allowing. So that's my goal, and my responsibility to this county is to look way out there and not just look for what we may-
I'll recognize, Commissioner Allen, that's the last I'll recognize before we go to, to vote. But unfortunately, growth is not free. Growth, you have to pay for it at some point in time, and when you get free money to build a building, it's a whole lot cheaper than, than having to build a building and fill it with, with local tax dollars. This is free money. Commissioner Allen?
Thank you. My only concern in not knowing operating costs, whether it was for the State Farm Building or for these buildings, is that whether we realize it or not, when we vote for that, yes, we're getting the money for the building itself, but you're voting for an unknown tax increase. And the reason that I'm saying that is because right now, our public safety department, they need an 8% raise, at least, and we know that right now. We have no idea what's gonna happen to the landfill, we don't know what that's gonna cost us. We can't look at these projects in silos, we can't look at them as individual things. You have to look at the whole landscape, and I don't know how many of you, you know, watch the budget and the budget meetings, but we held our breath, hoping we weren't gonna have to have a tax increase this year. If we paid public safety what they're worth and what they deserve, there'd be a tax increase this year. You're for sure gonna be seeing one in future years when we have to take on the operating costs of these projects that we're voting on tonight with free money. So I'm just saying, yes, be looking down the road, but be looking down the road at what this is gonna cost, which is why I press so hard on, what is it gonna cost? What's the operating cost? I wanna know what it is I'm pledging that money towards, 'cause it's, it's more than just the building. So I want the, I want the public safety buildings, I want a strong public safety department, I want Rutherford County to be the safest county that it could possibly be. So I'm not anti any of this. I am pro more information. That's all I'm asking for.
Commissioner Allen, I'm gonna ask you, the next time at your health and education meeting, and they come, the school board comes, it's never- meeting, and they come, the school board comes, it's never been asked in the time I've served and been on the county commission or in this one, has anybody ever asked the question? What's the utilities gonna cost in that new building? Never, never has it been asked by anybody on this commission. We vote on it, there's no report, time and time again, no report, when 2/3 of the tax dollars go to pay for education. And I'm not against education, I totally, totally support it, but public safety has been neglected time and time again, and you have free money. I'm calling the question.
That's unfair, Bill. Please, please digress.
I'm sorry?
That's unfair to attack currently. Please, let's stop and vote on this question.
We are calling for the question. Members, you're on the board. This is on the question. You're on the board. Members, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. This was the question.
On the question. Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
19 yes, 1 no.
Back to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, please apologize to Commissioner Allen. I think that was just a little too brusque for this time and place.
I don't, Commissioner Dodd, I don't think that I should give an apology, because I didn't say anything that's not true. Okay.
I don't wanna be contentious, but I think that's his privilege, whether or not he apologizes. And you don't have to apologize to stand up for what's really.
Commissioner, you outlined, I didn't call on you. Please, no, please read the motion.
The motion, construct six public health buildings. One in Walter Hill, one in Rock Vale, one in Christiana, one in Kittrelle, one in Last Cassis, one in Amville, paid for from the American Rescue Fund money.
That's the motion. Members, you understand? Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
19 yes, 1 no.
Motion passes. Chairman P.
That concludes your report.
Our report, and I think this notebook was well-earned tonight, so. That takes us to item number two. Members, item number two, Health and Education, no report. Property Management Committee, no report. Public Safety Committee, no report. Public Works Planning Committee, 10-year plan is before us. Members, the 10-year plan in dealing with the landfill was submitted to the Regional Solid Waste Authority. That was for 2020. There's some additional information, Commissioner Kush, that probably needs to be talked about from what came from, am I correct, Mr.?
Sure, I'm happy to, real quick, and I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes here. I think Ms. Barrett is here as well, and she was before the Public Works Committee. The 10-year plan that was uploaded to that SharePoint inadvertently, I think it was a previous version, and so what is included in tonight's packet is what was approved by the Regional Board already and is what has been sent to TDEC. And I believe Ms. Barrett's request is to have this body go ahead and certify that this is the approved plan, kind of as a belt and suspenders approach.
And I believe they meet on the 28th, which will be here in Rutherford County. It'll be a public hearing on, and of course, they wanted confirmation from this body to accept the 10-year plan for 2020. Am I correct? Commissioner Harris.
Chairman, we have looked over this, Public Works, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this 10-year plan.
Second. Have a motion, and it's second. Our council tells us that the resolution is on SharePoint and has already been approved. My, has not been approved. This is what is on your SharePoint. Am I correct, Chairman? Okay. So that's what you're voting on.
Both the 10-year plan and the resolution is on SharePoint.
That's correct. Everybody understand that? 10-year plan and resolution is on your SharePoint, and that will give her and our other two delegates from representing Rutherford County of the four counties, so they'll have that before them. Am I correct?
It's a prior accident.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? All right, members, this is a 10-year plan, we need to vote on the board, so at this point in time, you're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Members, that brings us to item number six, Steering Legislative Governmental Committee. Chairman, you're recognized.
These are all dealing with our school facilities tax. This is our last reading. We won't have to do this anymore unless it doesn't go the right way. I have to read it, is that correct? I have to read it, so I apologize, try to keep up. Whereas the General Assembly is passing the County Powers Act, Chapter 953 of the Public Acts of 2006, TCA, the Act to Levy Tax on the Privilege of Residential Development. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County finds that Rutherford County is in need of an additional source of revenue to offset the demands upon the public school system, which by the population growth experienced by Rutherford County, and to help fund capital expenditures for the public school system. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that a school facilities tax be levied in accordance with the following provisions and in accordance with the state law as codified in Tennessee Code Annotated Title 67, Chapter 4, Part 29. Section 1, in accordance with the provisions of TCA 6742904, Rutherford County hereby levies a tax on the privilege of residential development of property within Rutherford County as defined by TCA 6742903. All terms used in this resolution shall be defined in accordance with TCA 6742903 and other applicable provisions of the County's Powers Relief Act. The tax shall be levied at a rate of $1 per square foot to be calculated in accordance with the provisions of the County Powers Relief Act, not to be increased for a period of four years in accordance with TCA 6742908. The tax shall not apply to those buildings or structures exempted by provisions of TCA 6742906. The county building official is hereby directed to notify permit applicants of the liability for this tax and to provide applicants with a form estimating the school facilities tax liability prior to the time the building permit is issued. Rutherford County building officials hereby designate as the official employee in Rutherford County responsible for the collection of this tax. The school facilities tax liability shall be paid as followed. 50% shall be paid at the time of application for building permit, and the remaining 50% shall be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The revenue generated by this tax shall be paid over to the county trustee within 30 days of collection for deposit in a fund or funds designated by the majority of the Rutherford County Commission in accordance with TCA 6742911. Such funds shall be used exclusively for the purpose of funding capital expenditures for education, including the retirement of bonded indebtedness, the need for which is reasonably related to population growth. Any person agreed by the decision of the county building official responsible for administration and collection of this tax may obtain review of the decision by applying to the Rutherford County Board of Adjustments and Appeals within 30 days. If a timely request for a hearing is made by an agreed party, Rutherford County Board of Adjustments and Appeals shall, within a reasonable time following the request, hold a hearing regarding the complaint by the agreed party. Failure to make the demand for a hearing within the time limit allowed by this resolution shall constitute a waiver of the right to a hearing. After the Rutherford County Board of Adjustments and Appeals renders its decision, the agreed party may seek judicial review and some pursuant to applicable law. If the provisions of this resolution or the application arrow to any person or circumstances is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect other provisions of applications of this resolution, which can be given effect without the invalid provisions or application. And to that end, the provisions of this resolution. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall become effective after its adoption by 2/3 vote of this legislative body at two consecutive regular scheduled meetings. And this tax shall be levied beginning on the first day of this month following the second vote, public welfare requiring it. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, and a second. Commissioner Kush, any discussion or questions? Commissioner Kush, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Harris, section 3, and Nick, I may need your help on this. Going from memory, which is always a scary thing, the old language had a maximum increase after four years, a percentage increase. I don't see that in this language. Does that mean we can increase as needed after four years to a percentage that we feel is necessary? Or are we still bound by the old language of the percentage, maximum percentage increase after four years?
So this whole tax is going to be governed by state law. So whatever in TCA is what's gonna control. I haven't incorporated everything in state law into this expressly, it's inferred by reference, okay? So that's gonna control. The way I understood it is that every four years, it can be raised up to, I think, is it 10%?
10%.
And that's your cap, so you don't have to raise it 10%, but presumably you would, and you can only do that every four years.
That ball, as you clearly stated, is still in play.
Correct.
We can't change it to 25 if we feel like it.
Your state delegation might be able to get that for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll be on the board. This is our second reading. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Next one on the agenda is Resolution Regarding the Transition from Development Tax to School Facility Tax, whereas by the Private Acts of 1996, Chapter 215, Rutherford County adopted a private act known as the Rutherford County Development Tax Act as a tax on the privilege of residential development. Whereas the General Assembly subsequently passed the County Powers Relief Act, Chapter 953 of the Public Acts of 2006, TCA 674209, which provides authority for counties that qualify under the County Powers Relief Act to levy a tax on the privileged residential development for the purpose of funding capital expenditures for education, including the retirement of bonded indebtedness, the need for which is reasonably related to the population growth. Whereas the Board of Commissioners adopted the School Facilities Act at its regular scheduled meeting on June 17, 2021, to be levied beginning July 1, 2021. Whereas Rutherford County does not intend to assess a tax under both the Rutherford County Development Tax Act and the School Facilities Tax on the same residential development. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, beginning July 1, 2021, the School Facilities Tax shall be applicable to all residential development in Rutherford County for which a plat has not been recorded in Register's Office of Rutherford County, Tennessee, on or before June 30, 2021. Or if a plat is not required for which the building permit has not been issued on or before June 30, 2021, the Rutherford County Development Tax shall not be applicable to any residential development in Rutherford County, subject to the School Facilities Tax and for residential development, subject to the School Facilities Tax. The School Facilities Tax shall be the exclusive privilege of tax accessed by Rutherford County. All residential development for which a plat has been recorded in the Register's Office of Rutherford County, Tennessee, on or before June 30, 2021, or if a plat is not required for which a building permit has been issued on or before June 30, 2021, shall remain subject to the provisions of the Rutherford County Development Tax Act and shall not be subject to the School Facilities Tax this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, and a second. Have a second. Any further discussion or questions? We'll be on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners adopted the School Facilities Tax authorized by TCA 6742901 at its regularly scheduled meeting on June 17, 2021, to be levied beginning July 1, 2021, and whereas TCA 6742905 requires the county governing body by resolution adopted by a majority vote to adopt administrative guidelines, procedures, regulations, and forms necessary to properly implement and administer the School Facilities Tax. Whereas attached in Exhibit 1 is the Rutherford County School Facilities Tax Collection Policy and associated forms necessary to implement and administer the School Facilities Tax. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners believe it is in best interest of the residents of Rutherford County to adopt said collection policy and forms. Now therefore being resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rutherford County School Facilities Tax Collection Policy and associated forms, a copy of which are attached in Exhibit 1, shall be and hereby are adopted and approved pursuant to TCA 6742905, resolved this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, and a second. Commissioner Gammon, any questions? We're on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
The next one is a resolution on the redistricting committee. What we're doing is we are adding Alan Farley and Mike Curtis as members of the committee, but no voting rights. So the resolution reads, whereas the County Commission previously passed a resolution to establish a redistricting committee for 2021 local redistricting, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A. Whereas the redistricting committee met on June 2, 2021, and prior to electing a chairman and vice chairman, recommended that the redistricting resolution be amended to make clear that the Rutherford County Administrator of Elections and the GIS Analyst. clear that the Rutherford County Administrator of Elections and the GIS Analyst from Rutherford County OIT Staff are members of the committee. Whereas during its June 7, 2021, regularly scheduled meeting, the steering committee recommended that the redistricting resolution be amended to make clear that the Rutherford County Administrator of Elections and the GIS Analyst from Rutherford County OIT Staff are members of the redistricting committee, but should not have any voting rights. Now therefore being resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rutherford County Administrator of Elections and the GIS Analyst from Rutherford County OIT Staff are members of the redistricting committee with no voting rights. Thereby establishing a redistricting committee consisting of seven members, and further that the redistricting resolution attached as Exhibit A shall be and hereby is amended as follow. Section 3 of the redistricting resolution shall be substituted in its entirety with the following. Section 3, the other following individuals shall also be members of the redistricting committee, but shall not have any voting rights. Rutherford County Administrator of Elections and GIS Analyst from Rutherford County OIT Staff. All other provisions of the redistricting resolution shall remain in full force and effect, resolved this 17th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Johnson, discussion?
Are you second?
I'm the second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
Real quick, we've had some long discussions here today, so I want to end this on a good thing. Today, the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department, along with the Davidson County, took 15 pounds of fentanyl off the streets today, which would have killed 7 million people, and also 21 pounds of heroin. So I just want you to know that this problem is out here, and that we are doing something, and I commend them on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good job, Sheriff's Department. Any, well, I think we ought to thank Commissioner Cook, she gave everybody a freezer bag. Take your ice cream home, man. Or you can keep your warmed-up stuff that's in your microwave, Commissioner Phillips. Put that in there. Any statements or announcements? Commissioner Allen?
Just so everybody's clear, the mayor and I are good. Families fight sometimes. This is the job. We're supposed to have healthy and vigorous debate. Cast our votes, leave it on the floor. So just so there's no misunderstanding.
Well, and I totally agree, Commissioner Allen. Debate is healthy. We've worked hard tonight. This is probably the longest meeting. I know Veronica, it's the longest one you've been through. But the quarterly court used to meet until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, because if I was in high school, drive-by seat, and them old guys were still meeting up there, the light would be on, right? So it's good debate. Not everybody agrees. Statements and announcements, we've got Commissioner Rather, Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Rather.
Surprisingly, I'm going to be brief, because I know Commissioner Phillips has got food waiting on me. I just want to, I've dealt for several months with family that came up here earlier, and it's been hard, because I've never walked in those shoes. And I just want to thank every single one of you for your support, your compassion, especially Commissioner Cook. She was so excited to physically do something with her hands to help that family, and that meant so much to them, so thank each and every one of them.
Commissioner Cook.
I want to just brief you all a little bit on community care. We are going to have to expand community care, because we need adult daycare. We need, our county's growing, and we haven't increased the number of beds. We're still working. So don't be surprised when we come for you and say we need money to build an addition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kush.
Craig Harris, thank you for the resolutions regarding the development tax. I just want everybody to know, again, I've stated this in prior meetings, that this has been decades of wants and desires to get to this point. And it took a group of folks to get it pushed over the line, and you all know who you are, and I'm proud to be part of that team. And this is just a start. There's more work to do. But we, this was a huge win. Would you agree, Jeff? This was a huge win. So thank you, everybody, for supporting that.
Commissioner Reed.
Just got a text here that the Farm Bureau Leadership Committee, which is the Farm Bureau Women, looks forward to serving a grab-and-go breakfast at the June 28 meeting, and they'll start serving around 8:30 right out here like they always do.
Got MTSU chocolate milk?
So you'll get that MTSU chocolate milk and whatever. So come early and get you breakfast right outside the door here.
Okay. Our clerk would like to say something. Ms. Croll.
Well, you all noticed I had to leave for a few minutes, and I want to commend just the county as a whole. I was walking out of here, walking to an alarm in my building, me and my pink purse and high heels, and on my way out. Chris Clark and our OIT Director, Cody York, jumped on board, escorted me down there, helped me with that, and brought me back. So I'm proud to be a part of this county.
That's good.
And I was back. So I want to say thank you to them and just working with all of you. And happy birthday to my husband.
We have a good team. This county commission is a good team. Other comments? No have breakfast or anything? Kitchell's good. Nothing else to come before the order? Go to the order. We stand adjourned.